This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
Call to order, tonight's board meeting, please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Secretary Iverson, have we complied with the Open's Meetings Law notification tonight?
Yes, we have.
All right, let's please do a roll call.
Commissioner Luganbill.
Here.
Commissioner Spindler.
Here.
Commissioner Boo.
Here.
Commissioner Jean.
Here.
Commissioner Dux is not present, present Commissioner Hambach Boyle.
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson is not here.
And she plans on arriving hopefully about forty-five minutes late. Okay, next on our agenda is the public forum for tonight. Usually we have about thirty minutes for that, and there's a four-minute limit per person to speak, so when you come up, just state your name and address. So first, Heidi, Heidi James, come on up, and you have a group here, I see.
Good evening, my name is Heidi James, and I live at thirty-two fourteen Seymour Road. How do we prepare twenty-first century learners for a global society? It's no secret that teaching is now more complex than ever. Educators want to have an impact on students' lives through their work, but this is a different world than the one you and I grew up in. Learning has changed. At North High School, we are determined to help all students reach their full potential so that they thrive in this global society, and this is no small challenge. You don't have to look far to see great examples of how educators are inspiring a new kind of learning. Tonight you'll hear how students are leading classrooms as teachers observe, how club advisor provides culturally responsive opportunities for the whole school, how students' human needs are being met because a teacher reached out to the community, and how technology classes have transformed into collaborative spaces where content comes to life. I would like to introduce five of my colleagues from North High School and have them share what they are doing to make North great for every child.
Hi, I'm Liz Craig, six-five-one Indian Hills Drive. I am an English educator at North High School.
And I'm Terri Van Dyke, three-two-zero-three Benrood Parkway, and I am also an English instructor at North High School.
Our department cultivates critical thinking and communication skills through Socratic seminars in our English classes. The foundation of a seminar is researching nonfiction that complements the fiction the students are reading. For example, as the students read Of Mice and Men, they research and then read current articles that relate to the novel's themes. We explicitly teach students how to read closely, how to synthesize, and how to use textual evidence to support a claim. In the Socratic seminar, students engage in student-led discussion with their peers about a common theme which is related to the essential question of the unit. For example, our current essential question is, is the American dream accessible to all?
The proper setup of a Socratic seminar has a student sitting in two circles. The inner circle begins a discussion about the essential question while the outer circle takes notes on their peers' discussion and participation. The discussion is based on the texts that have been read because we are teaching students to use evidence to support their claims rather than just personal opinions. At one point, we signal for the students to stop so that they can get advice from the observers sitting in the outer circle. As teachers, we are silent observers from the outer circle. We assess students on using textual evidence, asking questions, and making connections with the peers' texts. Halfway through the class period, the groups switch roles so that every student gets a chance to talk, listen, observe, and coach. Through Socratic seminars, students learn to listen closely to their peers and generate authentic and free-flowing discussion on an academic topic for up to twenty to twenty-five minutes. These seminars begin freshman year and continue through high school. Our goals in English are always about preparing students for AP classes or for their senior capstone. We teach the skills, the students practice the skills, they perform the skills, and then we get to witness their confidence improve with each seminar. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pam Bungy, two-eight-four-one Neptune Court. I teach Spanish at North, and I'm also the Spanish Club Advisor. Communication is an essential twenty-first century skill, and more specifically, communicating with people of diverse cultures is fundamental in building a global society. In the World Language Department at North, we teach American Sign Language, French, German, Japanese, and Spanish. To facilitate communication, World Language students practice reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills on a daily basis. But that's not all students are learning. World Language students study geography, history, art, current events, and how to interact in a culturally appropriate manner. Recently, North students had a chance to practice their language skills when they attended a bilingual play sponsored by the Spanish Club. In the play, an elderly gentleman used his memorabilia from his life to introduce his great-granddaughter to their family history and their Latino culture. Spanish students practiced their comprehension skills, and students who were not enrolled in Spanish were also invited to attend. They learned about Mexican history, American history, and the treatment of minority cultures through the last century. Through authentic cultural experiences like the play, we educate students about other cultures and help them develop an understanding and appreciation for people who are different from, yet similar to themselves, while at the same time discouraging prejudice.
Hello, my name is Carrie Carlson. I'm a social studies teacher at North, and I live at sixteen-twenty-three Lewis Road, Fall Creek. I'm here to give you just one example of how we collaborate in order to meet the basic needs of our students. So last spring, I went to a fundraiser for the 4K program, and I happened to sit next to a DeLong teacher who told me about the Feed My People Weekend Meals Program at DeLong, that you give five pounds of food to students for the weekend if they need it, if they're in need, if they sign up for it. I asked her if I could get a contact for that, and by the next week, somebody had contacted me from DeLong telling me all about the program, and then they put me in contact with Feed My People, who then gave me all these templates and examples of how the program works in different schools. And so I corralled my colleague Jim Jeffries to help me create a plan of what that would look like at North High School. We took that plan, and we gave it to admin, and they said, hey, you can do this, and then we had to decide basically how to get students to sign up, like how do you get that information out, especially to people maybe who don't always read the school newsletter when it comes out? But the first step was sending it home during the summer in the school newsletter, which Arlene Rasmussen helped me do. The next step was looking at, Ellen Sternjar, for example, brainstormed other ways that we could send it home besides emailing parents, because she is the parent coordinator, the program. The English teachers, without Betty and I, gave up class time in order to tell students about it and hand out sheets during their class periods. Our school secretary is like, hey, I can collect it. If they don't want to deliver it to you, they can deliver it to me, and I'll put it in your mailbox. It's amazing amount of collaboration just within, you know, just within North, let alone with Feed My People, who are amazing to work with. Jim Jeffries' wife actually comes in, so Feed My People delivers the meals during my lunchtime on Fridays, and his wife comes in Friday afternoons and donates her time to hand out the food to students before they leave for the weekend. So I'm just very grateful that Feed My People is so easy to work with, that our admin said, yes, this is a program that would benefit our students, and that time and again, we have a staff that goes above and beyond to make sure that their basic needs are met.
Hi, I'm Jan Bovee, thirty-three-eleven State Highway Forty, Colfax. I'm an instructor at North High in the Technology and Engineering Department. I'm here to tell you how we inspire students' creativity and support their innovative ideas. We offer over thirty classes at the Technology and Engineering Department, which include, but are not limited to, computer operating systems, consumer automotive, welding, machining, graphics, cartoon animation, video game development, engineering, computer hardware, wood, architecture, small engines, aviation, and many, many more. These classes speak to the twenty-first century learners that Heidi referenced. To complete the projects, the courses demand a productive class culture, which include teamwork skills, real-world problem-solving techniques, technological advancements, and career-related activities. With many of these classes, we offer students opportunities to earn transcribed credit, articulated credit through the CBTC, and undergraduate credit through Milwaukee School of Engineering. Tonight, I want to focus on Introduction to Engineering Class that is driven by Project Lead the Way, also known as PLTW. Currently, we are learning about communicating ideas through sketches, such as isometrics, obliques, perspectives, and multi-view drawings. We utilize math to calculate different dimensions to determine conversions or square feet area. We incorporate science to help us understand mass, volume, and weight. Then we use technology, such as Autodesk Inventor. We draw our innovations on a computer and check for accuracy by using our MakerBot 3D printer to create a prototype. Tonight, I'm giving each of you a 3D print that a student made last week. It is our hope that when a colleague or friend sees this print, you can share that it is a tangible example of how North students are participating in the global society of the twenty-first century. Enjoy your gift. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
As you learned, we understand and embrace the responsibility of preparing our students for the unique demands of the twenty-first century. A global society means that students must be proficient communicators, creators, critical thinkers, and collaborators, and to help them learn these skills, you can rely on valuable experts like these five teachers and others in our district schools who care about the quality of education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you, always learn a lot when you guys come and talk to us. Is there anyone else from there? Okay. All right, great, thanks again. Next on this, I had Wells Mangrum. Are you here? Wells? Oh, okay, with Mark? Okay. I have you, Mark, next on there, but yeah, come on up.
Good evening, my name is Mark Goings. My address is E-one-seven-four-five-zero County Road V in Augusta, Wisconsin. And this evening, I had the pleasure to meet three fine gentlemen who are from Boy Scout Troop One-seventy-four. They come from a couple of different elementaries in our area, and they're here learning about government. And one of the most wonderful and tangible ways to do that is coming to all you guys. And so we got to come here, take a look at the room that we're in, the system that we use, and also the way that the information is brought to the community by talking about how this all works. So anyway, I have two gentlemen here who would like to state their name and say a little bit.
My name is Isaac John Mangrum. I live on thirty-one-thirty Annwick Drive, and today I'm going to tell you how I got to meet Robbins Elementary School. I used to go to Montessori, but it was too far of a drive, so we went to Robbins. I was scared at first, but then they introduced me to a really nice teacher, and they showed me around Robbins Elementary School. And then at recess, I made a friend, and I played tag, and it was really fun. And that is why I like Robbins Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Nathan Yoshimi Shifa, and I live at thirty-two-one-zero Benrood Parkway. And I want to share that when I had a little trouble multiplying by nines, so when I had a little bit of trouble, I told my teacher, and she gave me a little trick that, like, if I had two times nine, like, I count two, one, two, and then put out my finger, and then I get eighteen, because this is a ten's place end. Then I started to get how I multiply nines, and then I started to get As on my math tests.
One of the things we talked about is, for government to work, it's important to be part of the conversation, and so we talked about how you might start getting those little butterflies when you come up here to talk. And I know as an adult, I still get butterflies when I come up here to talk, but it's important that as a community, we all take that step and do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that the two ends of the spectrum here show the relationships that we have in this district with teachers and students, as well as, you know, high school students down to elementary students. I think this is a great time for you guys to come, too. So thanks for coming, guys, it was great. I think I got everyone on the public forum. Thank you again for everyone coming and sharing your stories. Next on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Go ahead.
Well, I have a very short report tonight, and then later I'll have a few words to say, but I want to review the upcoming Board of Education events. November third, at four PM in the Administration Building, there will be a meeting of the Demographic and Trends Committee. November ninth, at noon, there will be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee, and that will be also here at the Administration Building. November ninth, at seven PM at the Administration Building, there'll be a Parent Advisory Council meeting. November twelfth, at five-thirty PM at Wildridge Country Club, will be the first Golden Apple Awards sponsored by the Education Foundation, and all board members are invited to attend that event. November sixteenth, at ten-thirty AM in the Administration Building, there will be a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee, and that will be followed later in the evening at seven PM by a school board meeting at the Administration Building. Thank you.
Okay, great. Rich? Yes?
Can I ask a question? I have it down for the budget meeting at eleven, did we change that to noon? If we did, I could just change it online, if it works for everybody else.
Let's see, I don't have my notes here. We might have been eleven. We'll check with Charles, we'll double-check that.
In the brew sheet, it says eleven-thirty AM.
All right, so we'll figure it out. Okay, eleven-thirty would be fine. Good question. All right, for my report, first, I just want to thank everyone, I don't know if anyone here attended all the community forums that we had on the referendum, it was great to see so many people attend those. Next thing, and we'll be discussing that later on our agenda here, next, for board members, if you haven't taken the WASB Board Development Tool, that survey, I took it recently, it really isn't that long, so go ahead and take it, I gave you that sheet out to try that out, and we could discuss results later if you want. And just a reminder, I think there might be still time to register for the National Convention, I do not know, but it has to be soon if you can, if you want to go, and the WASB State Convention is coming up in January. And I do, just briefly, I want to give a short remembrance for Rachel Hedberg, she was president of Northwoods PTO. She recently passed away last Thursday, and I just want to just remember someone who is a shining example in our community, in our education community, and also who grade greatly for children, so I just want everyone to remember her. All right, students' reports. Who would like to go first tonight, Emily or Jason? Jason? Okay, all right, go ahead.
I would like to start with an apology regarding last meeting. I gave a few comments that called out to a few teachers, and that was inappropriate of me. I painted them in a negative light, which was not good, because the fact is, these two teachers are amazing teachers who love to teach, and they are really supportive, and they really care about the Eau Claire School District. In fact, one teacher, because of her, there is a thriving theater scene in Eau Claire. There's a national improv scene in Eau Claire, and because of the other teacher, there is a ninety percent pass rate in one of the AP classes. So these teachers are really devoted to the Eau Claire Area School District, and I just want to give my sincere apology to the board, to the superintendent, to the president, to Mr. Oldenburg, to those two teachers regarding the comment that I made during the last meeting.
Thank you, Jason.
And regarding this specific report of mine, well, last week was certainly a sports week for Memorial. The tennis team made it to state again, and then two playoffs for the football team at Memorial, and the cross-country team won state. That was pretty good. Regarding music, really good, really, really good. We also had the Monster Bash, which was on October thirtieth, it was at the Armory, and that was where jazz was able to perform, and students were allowed to wear their costumes and little dance, little gig, et cetera, et cetera. That's pretty exciting. Regarding this week, there is a play, Memorial is featuring a play called Afternoon in a Seashore. And this play will start featuring on, this Friday, actually, and it will end on Sunday, so I would invite everyone from the community to come to this play and check it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Excellent. Emily, go ahead.
I just wanted to start out with saying, this past week, our school did stuff a truck for Feed My People, and I don't know about a lot of classes, but I know that it did go very well from the head of, you know, the person who was in head of it for a committee. We also had a state runner in our cross-country, and we were really proud of her as she ran by herself this weekend, but she was surrounded by her whole team, almost everybody showed up to watch her run, and it was just really cool to see, like, that family. The end of the quarter is this Friday, so everybody's taking their quarter tests and getting ready for the second quarter, I guess. Two weeks ago was the choir concert, and that went well, and then this past Monday was the band concert, and that went well, as well, it was lots of fun. I think the orchestra concert is today. And then last Friday, we had our Halloween, you know, dress-up day, and all the teachers got into it like every year, it was really fun to see the students and the teachers get prepared and dress up for that. And then this next weekend is the swimming sectionals at Hudson, we're excited for that.
All right, great, thank you. And just a reminder, if you have any insights on our committee discussions, let us know. Okay, all right, board committee reports, I don't know, do we, budget hasn't met recently, PNG, do you have a, who's doing that? Okay, Commissioner Hambach Boyle.
Yes, we met today quite extensively, actually. We had policy that we presented to the board last time, and we took it back to committee. There were some questions between the board and the discussion last time on the student scholarship and awards policy, that we would look also at the gifts policy, and we did today, and we made some tweaks to both. So that was Policy Four-Sixty Student Scholarships and Awards, considerations from the board. So we added gifts and bequests to Policy Eight-Forty, which is, we've changed to gifts to the Eau Claire School District. And we also are going to look at the discrimination piece and cross-reference that policy to the Eau Claire Public School Foundation. So once we got into that piece, led us to the other policy, led us to the foundation, so we're working on those. We also worked on Policy One-Fifty-four, Board Self-Evaluation, in our discussion last time when we brought it to the board. We had some reflection of members on saying, is it okay to just reflect or self-evaluate once a year, or should we do that more than once? So we built it in and talked today on that policy, on aligning our self-evaluation board policy to our superintendent's goal update and evaluation process, so that we have it all aligned. That led us then, as we look at that, to Policy Two-Thirty, which is the new description of our administrative team, which has been in a strategic plan change. And so we spent time today on Policy Two-Thirty, updating the vocabulary to match the restructuring. A lot of that had to do with the defined, the verbiage for the directors and define the administration team. We then worked on Policy Two-Twenty-five, Evaluation of the Superintendent. We wanted to add to that policy and be specific as to where the evaluation of our superintendent would be kept, and so that's been added to that policy. We then, last board meeting, talked a little bit about the privacy in locker rooms, which led to another policy about filming or videotaping, which led us to looking at risk management and overlaying our contracts that we use with the public when we partner usage in our buildings. So we're going to put that one forward and work on it a little harder, using all three entities, Policy Seven-Thirty-one-point-one, Policy Four-Ninety-two, the filming and videotaping, and then look at how they interface with the contracts that we're using with our public community partners, okay? That may take a little bit, and we'll pull other people around the table to discuss that one. We will have a first reading tonight of another policy, we finished up hopefully today, Six-Five-Five-point-one Activity Passes, so I'll leave that one. Joe moved, I seconded, a unanimous vote, Catherine was absent, to move that forward for tonight. We also looked at Policy Four-Eleven, the Equal Opportunities Policy, transgender, we talked a little bit about that because there was an opportunity within the state for some of our staff to be versed more deeply on that, so we had that discussion. And I'm just going to quickly go through now what will be coming up in Policy and Governance. Last time, we talked about pulling together the eighty slides and the implications from the biennial budget, non-fiscally, on the policy within public schools. We are doing that, but we are going to look at our district needs, we're going to look at policies that we don't have that need to be there, and we're going to filter those in and get them all done, right? So November sixteenth, we're going to work on Innovation Zone, we've got Todd, Pete, Tim, Jim, Abby coming in for that one. Board Administration Relations, Policy Two-Twenty-four, we're going to look at Policy Two-Twenty-One, the appointment of the superintendent. Policy Two-Twenty-Two, Administration Agreements, and a new policy on filling a vacant board position, which is there, but we need to pull it and bring it to the board. On December seventh, then, we went back to the review for a new policy, we're going to use, we're going to work on Policy Four-Four-Seven-point-one-one, Use of Secclusion and Restraint. That needs to be redone. Policy Three-Four-Two-point-eight, Section Five-O-four, that's in place of special, you know, Five-O-four is in place of an IEP, different level of services. Three-Four-Two-point-seven, Services Programs for English Language Learners, that'll be in December. And then we pulled up one that our community has talked about, Three-Four-Three-point-two, Class Size, because that's been a concern. December twenty-first, we're going to look at Course Options, Staff Complaints and Grievances, Revenues from Investment, Fraud Prevention and Reporting, and Asset Management, including inventories. So those are policies that we have to have in place. So I think that's it for Policy and Governance. Was that enough?
You guys are rocking.
We, yeah, we wanted to also, we moved by, Joe, seconded by me, to look at the Exit Interview Policy, and we want to bring that up as part of a work session.
Okay.
Yeah, forgot that, Joe, I had to write it on the side because I didn't have any in the paper.
Okay, all right, got it. Great, thank you, you guys are doing great work, appreciate it. I don't think we had any others, and even if we did, Foundation, even if they had met, Catherine has not been here, so, okay. Legislative update then, Chris, I guess you're up again.
I'm up again, I'm not going to take a lot of time. I just have kind of two updates, I think. I wanted to update because WASB just updated the statewide voucher program, or what they call the parental choice program. I wanted to update it because all the numbers are in now since the Third Friday Count in September, which is what we look at as far as numbers of kids. According to that Third Friday Count, a total of two thousand five hundred and fourteen students are receiving vouchers to attend private schools under the statewide voucher program formerly known as the Wisconsin Parental Choice Program. That's up from about a thousand. That's up from about 1,000 students last year. So, the addition of 1,640 new students enrolled in the statewide voucher program for 15, 16 this school year. Only 19.1% had attended a Wisconsin public school the previous year, while 74.8% had already attended a private school. Um, the remainder were either not in school, were homeschooled, or attended school out of state. So, the private schools, um, taking part in the voucher programs this year, and this has not changed, is $7,214 per student in grades K-8 and 7,860 for each high school student. And that is part of the general budget provided to all public schools. Um, the other thing that was up on WASB's Legislative Update today was the Parental Opt-Out of Student Testing Bill. Um, before, there were certain grades, um, that you could opt out, 4, 8, 9, 10, 11. This bill would put opt-out for every grade, third grade on up through 12th grade. Um, what it would not do, though, it would not provide the information when you, uh, on the report card for schools as to how many kids opted out, so you could have some districts where they have a high percentage of kids taking the test and some districts that do not, but you would not know that when you looked at the data that was provided by the state. Um, they did not want the Department of Public Instruction making that distinction. Um, and I think that's it for this evening. You can get more specifics on WASB.org. You just click on Legislative Update and you can read all this stuff, so.
All right. Great. Thank you, Commissioner Hamakboyle. All right. Good. Uh, now we have Consent Resolution Agenda, on the Consent Resolution Agenda, these are items that are routine or have been considered before, uh, by the board, and, uh, we vote on all as one unless, uh, a board member decides to poll any. So, um, I would consider a motion to approve the minutes of the special closed session on October 12th. I would entertain a motion to, excuse me, to approve the minutes of October 19th, 2015.
Pull that, please.
Pull that one. Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session, October 19th. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting on October 26th. And I would entertain a motion to approve the Human Resources Employment Report. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve those four, except, all those except for the minutes of October 19th.
So, move.
I have a motion, Commissioner Zhang.
Second.
Second, from Commissioner Luganville. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion. Uh, you abstain on that, because we have abstention from, uh, Commissioner Wu. Uh, so, minutes of October 19th.
I just have a correction, and it's under the Board President's Report, where it says three board members attended the WASB Regional Meeting last week. Joe, Chris, and Rich. Catherine Duxe attended as well. And so, I think we need to put her in there. Um, Joe, Joe was there for the, um, policy impact of the non-fiscal items in the budget. Then he had to run to an alliance meeting. And then Rich and Catherine and I, um, stayed for the rest.
Okay. So, uh, I would accept a motion and then we will amend it by that? So, I accept a motion for the minutes? So, I use your things, yeah?
Move.
Okay. A motion from Commissioner Wu for the minutes, so I have a second.
Second.
Second, from Commissioner Zhang. Do you want to make that amendment, Commissioner Hamakboyle?
I just want to amend to include Catherine Duxe as one of the board members that attended the WASB Regional Meeting.
I have a second on that amendment.
Second.
Second, from Commissioner Luganville. Uh, any discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right. Motion passes with the amendment. Thank you. Uh, and now you have a announcement. Go ahead.
So, with your approval of the employment report, uh, tonight, you approved the appointment of two new directors, and, uh, I'd like to recognize, uh, those two new appointees. Uh, Dave Oldenburg, are you here? If you'll stand up, uh, be the new Director of Academic Services. Uh, Dave Oldenburg began his bachelor, earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in Social Studies from UW Stevens Point in May 1995. His first teaching job was at Riversdale High School in Muskota, Wisconsin, where he taught Social Studies and served as the school's Athletic Director. He was recruited by Osseo Fairchild and taught Social Studies at the high school there before moving to Loyal High School until 2002. Uh, there, he also taught Social Studies. During his teaching career, Mr. Oldenburg coached both basketball and softball. He also acted as Loyal High School's Dean of Students and Athletic Director. And during this time, he earned his Superintendent Certification at Winona State University in 2003. In 2005, Mr. Oldenburg joined the Eau Claire Area School District as the Dean of Students at Memorial High School, a position he held until 2007, when he left Eau Claire to become the Assistant Principal at Holman High School, a position he held until 2009, when he returned to Eau Claire to become the Principal of Memorial High School. We welcome Mr. Oldenburg as the Director of Academic Services. Dave, I look forward to the leadership that you're going to bring to this new, uh, position and to the contributions that you are expected to make to the Department of Teaching and Learning and to our students. And next, I'd like to recognize Larry Summerfeld, who is the Director, uh, new Director of Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Summerfeld graduated from the Illinois Institute of Technology in Chicago, Illinois, with a Bachelor of Architecture in 1981. He then worked as an intern before joining Wickslumber in Eau Claire as draftsman architect, a position he held until 1989. Mr. Summerfeld next accepted a position with PMSI in Eau Claire until 1993, when he began his own firm, Summerfield and Associates. In 1997, his firm merged with PMSI and he served as a Vice President in that company until 2005, when he joined Ayers and Associates as Project Manager. In 2008, Mr. Summerfeld joined the Eau Claire Area School District as Facilities Planning Manager. He has served in that role until this evening. We welcome Mr. Summerfeld as the Director of Buildings and Grounds. And Larry, I look forward to your leadership with the Buildings and Grounds Groups, and I feel confident that you will work very hard to meet the many challenges in facilities that the district faces in the coming years.
Great. Congratulations both of you, and thank you. Um, okay, we only have, uh, one individual considered resolution tonight, and that's to approve a quick claim deed. And my understanding is this is due to an error from a, uh, document, uh, back in, what, 1989? Something of that nature? Correct? Um, so, we have before us, let me just pull up the agenda item. So, the request is to approve the, board to approve a quick claim deed in 1989. This is a property that was sold to a couple, and the property was part of the Long School Site, and it looks like it was improperly recorded, is still belonging to the district. Is that accurate? Yes. So, um, I, I don't know, uh, we could, we should have a motion to approve it and then see if there's any discussion, so I would take a motion.
I move approval.
So, I have a motion from Commissioner Luganville.
Second.
Second, from Commissioner Zhang. Are there any questions or comments about this, uh, this, uh, resolution here? Commissioner Wu?
I, I am a little bit uncomfortable at the idea that, how it was made a mistake in the first place, and why are we quickly to adopt this? I know that the owner wants to sell the property, but I still don't understand why it happened in the first place, and why we have to correct it now.
Could someone explain the, the history and the correction why it's done this way? I don't know if that you have here. I don't know who's going to do it. Okay.
All right. So, what I understand is that the property was actually purchased from these, purchased in 1989, and at that point in time, the property was actually theirs. Even though it's still recorded as the school district, I think at, back in 1989, there was an agreement that that piece of land that they're looking at was actually intended to go with the property. And so, now the owners are going to sell it, and when the title company did the search, they found that that piece of property was still titled to the Eau Claire School District, even though in 1989, the school district had said, this is no longer our property. And I don't know if there was a financial exchange at that point in time. I don't have the history on that. Um, but the reason why it's coming up now and asking to be done, um, and approved, is because the own, the homeowner has sold the property, and they are going to be closing at the end of the month. And if we need more information, I do have the cell phone number of the attorney, and we could call him.
Was that, uh, do we use, uh, our attorney Steve Weld for this, or someone else to look into this?
The attorney is Grant Beardsley. And I think he is, hold on just a second. Um, he's with them, right?
He's with, he's with Weld Associates.
Yep.
Okay. Grant Beardsley.
Yep. Does that help?
Does that help, Commissioner Wu?
I looked at the property and it was jaded, very odd way.
You mean, jutting out?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, um, it wasn't clear who owned the property before 1989. It appeared like the school district was the owner, but I still don't know that for sure. And when it was sold, who sold it? The district sold it in 89?
Yeah, according to the, the description of the report here, it says the property was part of the Long School Site, and then it appears we sold it to that couple back then, in 1989, and it wasn't recorded correctly. Is that accurate?
That's my understanding from talking to Mr. Vanderwater.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Hamakboyle, did you have a question? I know you had a light on for a minute there. No, no, I don't want to put you on the spot. Okay. Other questions? I'm not a lawyer, so, um, (laugh) uh, true, you're soon. Okay. A couple of years, okay. Commissioner Hamakboyle?
I, you know, when you look at the, the paperwork, um, with John Flynn and Linda Clark, they were on the school board at that time.
I believe Mr. Summerfeld can answer our question. Can you come up, please?
The parcel in question was originally part of the Long School property. It was a street right-of-way that was never turned into a street, uh, at the time in 1989 approximately. Documents that I have seen indicated that it was approved by the board for sale to the, uh, owners, and that, uh, the subsequent survey that we had done for the referendum project, that was done by the land surveyors that checked the records, uh, did not show that parcel as belonging to the district according, because of the sale. So, it is just to correct an error in the city in the recording of this particular parcel.
So, our records were correct, and it was recorded incorrectly in the city?
That's my understanding.
Okay. That makes sense. Anything else? Okay. Um, for this one, I think I should have a roll call, though.
Okay. Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamakboyle?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, let us adjourn to committee now. Uh, we have, uh, four items for discussion here. Um, the first one is, um, about a collaborative effort with the Eau Claire Water Safety Task Force, and, um, I don't, do we have someone for a presentation?
Yes, we do.
Who's doing that?
Um, so, this presentation, uh, will be led by Kari Winkler.
Okay. We'll give you a chance to set up here.
I'm Kari Winkler, and I'm the Department Chair of the Fiscal Education Department at Memorial High School, and one of the members of the, um, Eau Claire Water Safety Task Force. Paula Pater, who was another one of the presenters, uh, is unavailable to be here this evening due to a last-minute family emergency.
Hello. Uh, thank you for allowing us to speak. Uh, my name's Dave Whitehouse. I am a member of the Eau Claire Water Safety Task Force, and I also work for the Eau Claire Fire Department as the supervisor of our dive rescue unit. Um, today, what I, what we were going to do is just briefly discuss our organization, give you some history on, and background on how it was formed. What this is, is an organization of people from the Eau Claire area. There's approximately 16 different organizations, ranging from public, uh, private entities, local businesses. And the reason that we got together was to try to reduce the incident of drowning in, in the Eau Claire area. Me personally, um, I, as a rescue diver, I have the unfortunate, um, responsibility to recover the victims of drowning. And a number of years ago, a classmate of my daughter's was lost in, uh, in the Eau Claire River. Um, I participated in the recovery, and it struck my family pretty hard. Um, she, it was a classmate. Um, I want to say it was the year afterwards, I also recovered another student from another, uh, high school here in Eau Claire, and met with Paula Pater. We decided that we wanted to try to get an organization going, something that was going to help reduce the drowning, maybe educate the public, and that's kind of how this all got started. I kind of talked a little bit about this already, but, uh, a la, a large amount of what we're doing is, is public education. Uh, I really believe that if we can educate children and their parents, and then the young adults that are here as students in the university, it can reduce the number of drowning incidents, and then hopefully, bring a little bit more awareness from the Uh, some of the things that we've done so far is, is we've gone around and, uh, done some, well, we, we've got a list of some of our accomplishments later, maybe we might want to go into, go into those yet. Water Safety Task Force, we've, we've taken on a bunch of different projects, and as a group, we've kind of sat around collaboratively and tried to figure out what, you know, what are some things that we can do, and came up with some projects that we would like to tackle. The, one of the, um, more successful ones that we've been doing is this life jacket loner board. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. Um, we've placed, uh, kind of a station at area, swimming areas and boat launches. The ones at the boat launches were done in collaboration with the DNR. Uh, we had a member from the DNR on our group, and, uh, we've got, recently got the DNR back involved in the group, but what it is, is a place for somebody, if they don't have a life vest, they can go and they can just take one. They can use it for the day, hang it up to dry. Um, initially, we thought we would end up losing them, and they would walk away, and as we found out, the generosity of the Chippewa Valley surprised us, and we end up with more. So, people are dropping off life jackets to share with others, so it's, it's a really neat program. And we have six here in Eau Claire County, and then there's also one up in Holcomb and one on Lake Wasota. So, it's kind of growing. The ones, the, the DNR works with us on, those have to be at a boating site. They're, uh, more relative to boating, and then the ones that are, um, that we've sponsored are at swimming locations. And we have some at Riverview. We've got one at Half Moon Beach. Uh, there's also one at Altoona Park.
They, they, when, here, up here. When, when, that's okay.
Sorry. It's the first I'm speaking here, and it's like, I'm hearing you over there.
It, it echoes.
I'm sorry.
Uh, when did you start this?
Uh, it was three, three years ago in May, I believe, or April. So, it's, it's been a few years now. Um, another thing that we did too is, is we've got these Water Watcher cards, and I brought some along. Feel free to take them. Uh, really neat idea. Um, I wanted to also recognize Becky Adamasky is, um, from the YMCA, is also a member of our group. Becky was, uh, instrumental in the Water Watcher Cards, and she has been a very active member of our group, and I want to make sure you guys knew she attended. There were some other people that were going to try to be here, and they weren't able to make it, so. But feel free to take those. They're kind of a neat idea, and, uh, basically what that is, is they're handed out at, uh, water events, and it's really a promise from, uh, if you accept this, you're telling me that you're going to watch your children while they're in the water. And it gives you some tips on, I'm not going to be on a cell phone, I'm not going to be doing Facebook, or my, my promise is to focus on my child and make sure that they don't go under the water. Uh, also, I wanted to mention too with the life jackets, just real quickly, one of the things- Also, I wanted to mention too with the life jackets, just real quickly, one of the things that um really got the life jacket thing going was there was a drowning over on uh at Altoona Park, it was a a young boy. And his grandmother approached me at a marathon and kinda recognized me, said, "I wanna help you." And she has developed a life jacket and swimming lesson, like fun, where she'll give out life jackets to anybody that wants one. Um, if if you have children that you can't afford to have a swimming, swimming lessons, she'll help pay for the swimming lessons. And it's really a neat thing. Uh, it's called Jacob's Jackets and now it's called the Jacob Schultz Memorial. But I kinda got that going. A couple of other things that we did for public outreach, the National Night Out, I'm sure all of you have uh heard of that and the Ski Sprite Show. We handed out a lot of those at uh the Water Watcher Cards there. We've done some uh Becky and uh Mike Laska, he's a fire inspector for the city of Eau Claire. They went out and they've been doing programs for water safety at the schools for the fourth and fifth graders and it's been going really good. Um, I think Becky could probably agree that it was very worth, very, very worthwhile and we really appreciated the opportunity to be able to come in and talk to you. I know our fire department is very excited about the water safety aspect and I think you're gonna see even more from us. Uh, one of the other things, uh, I went to the university and I talked to the RAs, the resident assistants right at the beginning of the school year, cause we've got a lot of the university students on the river tubing and stuff, so gave them a couple of safety tips.
Actually, I'm gonna back up just a little bit, um, just to talk about the statistics. I actually came on board about a year and a half ago. I kinda heard secondhand that that this committee was looking to find out more about what the school district was doing in terms of um teaching water safety and teaching swimming. Um, and so at the time, I was in an interim safety coordinator position in the district and and it was kind of a nice opportunity for me to to go over and share kinda two angles of of what we're doing in the school district. And so, you know, I went over, chatted with the group, shared some information and and um kinda stuck with the group because what they're trying to do in the community and also in the schools is very much what we're trying to do um in our high school and actually our middle school FIAID programs. So when you look at the statistics and and I don't wanna dwell on um the negatives here, uh, but since two thousand and two, there's twenty-four deaths um that are water-related or submersion type of uh incidences. Fifty percent of those, obviously alcohol was a factor, but when you look at the last two statistics, um, one-third of them were between the ages of twenty and twenty-four, which is our kids who are getting out of high school. And we're talking post-secondary readiness and some of those kids never get quite to that point because um, you know, Dave's dragging them off the bottom of the river. Um, and ninety-two percent of these were male. Pretty astounding statistics, uh, and these are statistics that I share with my students at the start of every um basic water rescue because kids think it's not gonna happen to them and and I don't have to worry about it, but um, you know, it it obviously is an issue. Uh, let me flip ahead. So in in two thousand and thirteen, um, there was a survey that was done at the at the elementary level with fourth grade students, looking at the frequency of their swimming, their abilities, um, kinda their confidence level. And and just trying to figure out what kids think they can do versus what they're able to do. Um, and when you look at the statistics, swimming is an activity that a lot of kids in the community engage in. And and on average, they swim about ten times over the course of the summer. Anywhere from public waterfronts to supervised locations, you know, Chaos Water Park, Fairfax Pool, um, and throughout the state of Wisconsin. I think when I look at this survey, uh, we did one at the high school level last year and what we're seeing at the elementary level is very similar to what we see at the high school level. Kids think that their swimming abilities are much higher than uh when we put them in the water and and attempt to have them swim. Um, and so the data that uh they found from this is, you know, twenty-eight percent of them are saying they have no experience with swimming lessons, learning to swim. That's a high number of kids right there that that don't have that swimming experience. Now, at the elementary school, it's a little bit different because it's not part of our FIAID curriculum. That obviously comes into play at the middle school level. The next piece of data talks about eighteen percent of the fourth graders talked about their swim instructor was a friend or a sibling. So somebody that's not um, you know, well-schooled in in teaching swimming. I think for me, the the positive aspect in these last couple were the kids are comfortable wearing life jackets. There's not that negative stigma to, you know, oh, you can't swim, therefore you have to wear a life jacket. So there's some real positives that come out of this, but there's also some pretty scary negatives that um when we look at at kids and and their ability to swim or learn to swim. So last September, um, at the beginning of the school year, I worked together with this committee to um put together a survey and then we used electronics in the FIAID realm, um, which was pretty cool. We got Chromebooks and and part of our beginning of your um kinda get-to-know-you orientation, we had kids fill out the survey online either using Chromebooks or their um smartphones. And so we surveyed five hundred and sixty-six students. You know, sixty percent of them were kinda that freshman sophomore level and forty-one percent were juniors and seniors. And again, that's pretty standard with FIAID only, you know, being for freshmen through juniors for the most part. You can look at at the ethnic background with the data that we um got. So looking at the data that we got, eighty-nine percent of the students said that they can swim. And and their definition of swimming may be different than kinda what we're looking for. And I don't necessarily wanna read one by one because, you know, I I wanna try to capture the essence of what we're looking at here. So with eighty-nine percent saying, yes, they can swim, that means eleven percent basically are saying they they can't or have very limited. But yet you look at the percentages down below when they're asked specific questions. Can you tread for for two minutes? Can you dive to the bottom of the pool? You know, can you swim the length of the pool? Some of these um, you know, percentages don't don't match up. Uh, and I've been teaching fiscal education for, uh, this is my twenty-second year in the district and, you know, our swimming ability hasn't gotten um significantly better in terms of, you know, our kids, there still are some kids that struggle despite all of our efforts. The last part kinda talks about, again, kids overemphasize their abilities in what they're able to do. Okay, um, again, just some general data, where kids swim, what they're doing, pretty average, you know, that that this is a popular activity. And whether it's at Lake Altoona Beach or Fairfax Pool or Friends Pool, kids are out there and and they're swimming. Boating and recreational activities, again, pretty consistent with with people, you know, pursuing these types of things. And and this is from a fiscal education standpoint, this is what I wanna see our kids doing in the summer, not sitting home playing video games and and, you know, being sedentary. And so this is, this is good that they're doing that, but at the same time, these are some risk-taking um things if they don't wear life jackets and if they're not properly um skilled or trained in the area. You notice that only fifty to seventy-five percent indicate that they wear a life jacket when they're doing these boating activities. Like, you know, the the attitude is, it's not gonna happen to me, I've got the skills, I'll be safe. This last little piece kinda talks about how often our high school students supervise young siblings, young children. Um, a- as you can see, you know, there's a large percentage that have the responsibility of watching um younger siblings or younger children. Uh, and when you look at your Water Watcher Card, one of the things is not being distracted. And so I'm not sure how many of you frequent high schools, um, but to walk down the hall and not see kids distracted by cellphones is, it's pretty um rare that you could walk down and not get run over by somebody that's texting or or busy. And and so um, we we place great faith in our young people to supervise, but at the same time, you know, there are um, you know, situations where sometimes they get distracted. And ultimately, you know, these are situations that can put somebody else at risk. Um, so what we're looking for in, you know, in the community, like Dave said, continuing to do the the loner boards and the Water Watchers, Water Watcher Cards, continuing to um look at finding ways to make swim lessons more accessible and both through Parks and Rec and through uh Becky at the Y, looking at financial waivers for economically disadvantaged uh students to take swim lessons. Um, you know, there also um was an effort last year to to reach out to the university students with educational messages on coasters at local taverns. Uh, I think that this is more than just a school district thing, it's a, it's a community-wide approach to keeping kids safe. So why are Dave and I here and why was Paula supposed to be here? I I think we are looking at what can we do um as a community and also as a district to to make things safe. Um, Dave's gonna talk just briefly on some some research that he found um other states and other school districts.
When we, when we set, were decided to come in or were asked to come in here and talk to you, one of the things that I um considered was, is what are other school districts doing? Um, I I know that this isn't a uncommon statistic. I'm sure that those statistics are common for any community that has the amount of water that's in their area. We have two major river systems and we have a lot of people going to cabins and enjoying the summer that anybody that's driven anywhere near the river in the summer has seen people floating on those round things. That has just exploded. Uh, Kari and I talked about it uh just before the meeting and it's amazing how many of the school district uh students are actually out on those tubes. There's a unbelievable amount of them. And if you stop and think about how many of um answered, "I don't know how to swim" on that uh survey and then how many more probably answered, "Yeah, I can, but maybe probably couldn't watch on the river, you won't see anybody wearing a vest." Um, I'm hoping someday it's like a helmet on a bike. But um anyways, some of the other uh things that I looked at was, I know Minnesota, they they just recently um introduced a bill, it's HF number twenty-one thirteen. And the the idea for it is to develop a plan to offer swimming lessons to all students in the state of Minnesota. And I'm sure a lot of you have heard about it. Um, I think it's very interesting, I'm I'm gonna be paying close attention to it and see how well that goes. There's a um, there's another school district in Washington that's actually requiring swimming ability proficiency, or proficiency, sorry, proficient.
Proficiency.
Anyway, um, they they have a test for incoming freshmen to their PE uh program and they're requiring them to be able to show that they're able to keep themselves above water for five minutes. And one of the things that was similar between the two of them was they, um, both Minnesota and this uh community in Washington had a drowning in one of their schools. And I and I believe that the, maybe the precipitator precipitator for this action was because of the liability of a child drowning in the pool. They wanted to make sure that they had the children up, at least able to keep themselves afloat. I'm hoping that the thing in Minnesota kinda takes off because I really truly believe if every child coming out of high school knew how to swim, we'd see a significant decrease in the number of drownings. And then I would have a significant decrease in the number of children I have to pull out of the river, hence the reason that I'm here today.
Just briefly to finish up, um, over the last three years, the um FIAID department at the secondary level has been revamping our curriculum. We've always had swimming as a component in our uh curriculum, but we've kinda changed how we deliver things. And the middle school um curriculum really focuses on that skill and stroke development, whereas the high school, um, it brought along kinda what we teach. The freshman and sophomore level have uh what's called kind of a basic water rescue class. So it's it's those survival skills, you know, reaching assists, throwing assists, um, treading, survival floating, canoe safety, things that can help kids um, you know, to to hopefully learn in the event of an emergency what to do. So, you know, I think that we've made great strides in looking at how can we best utilize the five swimming pools that we have in our um schools to to kinda maximize the effort. Uh, in terms of stakeholders and 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 how we can make improvements so that, like Dave said, all kids can swim and have some basic safety skills, um, it's gonna take a a community-wide approach. Both, you know, the school district, maybe um, you know, adding some additional supports for us to help reach some of those kids that maybe we're missing, uh, and then the continued efforts of the Water Safety Task Force and and other community partners to help get that message out. The types of resources that that, you know, I think we're looking for from a school district perspective are not only financial, but but manpower and time. If you're looking at a regular FIAID class, it's anywhere from forty-eight to fifty-two minutes and you have on average thirty-two to thirty-five kids in a class, you know, what are some ways that we can best utilize the time and the space and and additional people to help kids um to to develop these skills? And some of that may just be developing a screening process. When they come in at the high school level, if they've transferred in from outside communities, uh, you know, whether it's Iron River or, you know, somewhere that doesn't have a pool, um, or somewhere outside the state that that they didn't have that access, is there a way for us to screen them and have targeted interventions? You know, like I said, there's only one of myself and a lifeguard on duty, there's only so much that that we can do with the current system that we have. And I think kinda why we're here is, A, to kinda let you know what's going on and then and B, also, just to say, what are we trying to achieve and and what, as a school board, um, what are you wanting from from us and from um, you know, the FIAID program in terms of creating, uh, you know, to me, this is a post-secondary skill because if kids aren't safe, they're not gonna be able to pursue their dreams and and so, um, I'm hoping this works. If I can get on my, alright. So, um, a couple of years ago, the American Red Cross, who um I'm certified as a lifeguard, they did a survey and they're saying that in their survey, fifty perc- fifty-six percent of the adults said that they can swim and they can perform five critical water safety skills that could save their lives. So again, just over half the people that were surveyed. And so I I look at our students, if they're able to do these skills, does that provide them enough um, you know, water safety skills so that they're not gonna end up uh in a water-related incident? So again, floating or treading for one minute, okay? Stepping or jumping into the water over their head and then resurfacing. Okay, treading or floating in a circle and then finding a way out of the water. Okay? Fourth one would be exiting without a ladder and the fifth one would be that twenty-five-yard swim. So it, as you can see, these are all skills that, um, you know, don't involve kids being world-class swimmers. We're not asking them to do, you know, a hundred yards of the butterfly, um, but they're they're basic essential things that um with them having a swim program from sixth grade all the way through tenth grade, I think are very doable. Hopefully with some additional support. Alright, at this time, does anyone have questions for the two of us or or Becky also can answer questions too?
Commissioner Hambach Boil, then Luke, Commissioner.
I have a couple. I'm an old WSI lifeguard, Lake Superior, you know, we never had pools up there, we swam in the lake. So anyway, I have a couple of questions. Did you find a correlation to poverty and kids' exposure to swimming and having those opportunities in their life? And I had another one with, um, I spent my whole life at the preschool level. The earlier the better to get kids and families acclimated to water, does that fit in here anywhere?
Yeah, actually, um, you know, overall, when we um look at low socioeconomic, um, a lot of times it's just not necessarily um paying for swim lessons and having those opportunities, but sometimes it's just even as easy as um getting to, the transportation, you know, the the time allotment. Um, and I think when we've looked at offering um free ones, cause last spring, um, we did kind of a water safety thing with the Longfellow Elementary um after-school program. And so we offered uh those students um swim lessons and and again, you can offer and you can send it home, you can talk to parents about it, but it doesn't always mean that they're gonna um take advantage of those those resources. So um, for me, it's looking at ways that we can do them within the school day and get additional um supports or resources, whether it's um, you know, target time at the middle school. I I think for me, the hardest part is there's a lot of different demands on our kids academically, physically, emotionally. And so sometimes this is one that gets kinda left by the wayside. And and so it's just trying to find ways to be creative and smarter with how we deliver our services. Uh, but definitely there is a a link there. So, and some too, I think culturally, um, you know, there's some situations where um there's some barriers to to accessing lessons and and even just getting in the pool and the, in the. barriers to accessing lessons and even just getting in the pool in the schools.
Commissioner Luga Mill.
Yeah, that's actually what I was going to ask was, to your knowledge, do they have swimming lessons in Mung in this community?
I'm going to turn that over to Becky.
My name is Becky Damski and I'm the aquatic director for the Eau Claire of ICA. We have been putting outreach efforts to the Mung community. Yeah, sorry. I have a loud pool voice too. We've been putting outreach efforts, working with the Early Ridge Learning Center with Jill Elliott in particular, putting together some outreach efforts where the Y would support 20 families of low socio-economic poverty level, but specifically looking into the Latino and Mung community. And we offered 20 lessons and only seven participated over the summer and we really tried to be very, very flexible and complete the paperwork for them so if language barriers were the case. The issue right now is we're just trying to figure out how to work with the Mung community to show that swimming lessons is a normal pattern that their children will do and we want them to do it safely. It's just we haven't made that connection to that community yet. We're working on that and the schools are one way in which we feel we can make an effort to within part of a school district setting and part of the day setting, we can maybe get a little bit more headway on that.
I wanted to add too, we also, just last month, welcomed two members of Mung community into the Water Safety Task Force. Coworker of mine, Bu Shao Zhang, he's an engine operator on the fire department and then a member from the Mung Community Center. And we were hoping to do something for the new year and hand out some information, but there wasn't enough time to get things going. Did you have a follow-up or?
I have other questions.
I just see your light on still. Okay. Commissioner Zhang?
Okay, this task force has come a long way since our first meeting. I remember that. I think we were on our second loner board when my hours was cut, so I was no longer able to come. But yes, I see that we are coming a long ways and there are a lot of barriers as far as with the Mung community. I tried it, Becky and me worked on it, but it's very hard because swimming is something that is not valued because in the old country, no one swims, you know? You want to shower, you go get water and then you bring it home and you shower, you know? And so, it's very hard for parents to understand that, you know, this is a skill that they're going to need. So, I hope that helps you with that.
Interesting, my daughter's lifeguarding tonight at North High School. I noticed a third was aged 20 to 24, I believe, with the accidents, which obviously around college age. I was at one college visiting and they actually required a semester of swim lessons at that college. I don't know if there's been any effort to at the universities focus on this more also? Has there been anything with that? Because you just look at the third already right there and, you know, it could be tubing down the river or whatever, jumping in the river or whatever. So, I don't know if there's been any effort at that.
I wanted to add something right along the same lines. When I was looking into other districts and their involvement in this, there was a large number of colleges that actually had a watersmanship or a swimming abilities requirement for graduation. And some of them have gone away from that, but for quite a while, there was quite a number of them that actually required it for graduation from the university.
Others? Commissioner Luga Mill, you had more?
Yeah. You mentioned that they have lifeguards during the classes in the district. I'm assuming that it's all district staff during like a prep period where they don't have the regular class, correct?
It's our effort to try to have adults staff, but in most buildings, there's not enough to staff all seven hours and so, we hire lifeguards. Both North and Memorial High School have WSI lifeguard classes that we train lifeguards and so then we hire those students if they've got a prep time. But again, our effort is to try to get adults and I don't know, earlier this fall, if you saw all of us in our lovely bathing suits on TV, I caught a little grief on that because they didn't tell anybody that the news was coming, but I thought, middle-aged people don't like to be seen in their swimsuits, so I didn't think that anybody would show up. But I think it's important that, you know, that the district really has a positive thing going for them and that, you know, all the FIAD teachers are lifeguard trained and they're WSI or water safety instructor trained. So, we've got a high level of employee there that are doing some good things. And one of the drawings that happened in Minnesota, the FIAD teacher, and sometimes we get a bad reputation, but this person kind of earned it because they were teaching in the pool and they weren't lifeguard certified. So, again, that's kind of a long answer to your short question.
Anything else? You have more?
Yeah, just one more. Because we do pay for each summer, a child could take, say, they want to take a Level One swimming class, the district pays, they foot the bill for that, correct? Is that, I mean, through the parks, through the summer school, is that something that the district can cover? Do they do that currently?
I'm unaware of that.
I believe that is through Park and Rec.
Yeah.
Through, yes.
So, they do?
Go ahead. I don't think that the district actually pays for the class. We get a discounted rate if you're a city resident through Parks and Rec for swim lessons, but the district doesn't actually pay for one, like swimming lesson class through Parks and Rec.
So, the district does not currently do that?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Commissioner Voe.
Similar questions. It was about 30-some years ago that I was a student in this building. I was required to take swimming class and I just don't know what the current requirement for PE, if the requirement is no longer there, I'd like to see that the policy reflect, the curriculum reflect that lesson be included. Also, I learned in the past that we have such thing through consumer class of baby think over. That's safety issue related to something like water safety concern. So, maybe perhaps the district can adopt something like safety training that has all components, which water is part of that. And again, that curriculum will need to be taught to all the students, but knowing that students are already required to take so many classes, perhaps we can just build in existing courses.
Currently, to graduate, students need a credit and a half of physical education and so, they get that swimming, water safety at their freshman and sophomore year. And then at the middle school, everyone takes swimming in sixth grade, seventh grade and also in eighth grade. So, it's a requirement, but some of the barriers can be, you know, kids with excessive absences or, you know, students that say, "I'm not going to get in the pool." Or, you know, we try to make modifications so that everyone's able to get in the pool, but ultimately, you know, we can't reach everybody. And the situation that Dave talked about earlier, the young man that he pulled out of the bottom of the river that was his daughter's classmate, I had that young man in class. And he was one that had transferred into the district and had no swimming skills and despite my efforts and he should have never been around the water at all. But how do you go to a parent who's new to the community, who maybe is low socio-economic and say, "Your child should never be around water because they're not safe?" And I think for me, that's part of the reason I stayed on with this task force is, you know, we try really hard to reach everybody, but there's some things that are out of our control. But yeah, everybody at least gets the three years of middle school and the two years of high school.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I just appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this? Okay, great. Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll keep working on it. Okay, next is the Start Time Committee update and Ms. Marks, I guess Kay, you're going to do that? Okay, okay, just a smidge. So, just a reminder, everyone, the board had passed a resolution on this this past spring and in that resolution was to get an update on start times, how the Start Time Committee is doing in November. And the, in the resolution was planned to have a final plan to look at, I believe in February. Computer's about to restart.
Okay, I think we're going to get started. I offered to sing and dance as a diversion, but kind of as Kari said, with middle-aged people in swimsuits, there's just some things you don't want to see. Me singing and dancing would be one of those, so.
Thanks for that idea.
Yeah, isn't that nice? So, it looks like we might have to go old school with just a doc cam for the PowerPoint presentation when Mark has his opportunity to share with you. But as I give the introduction, they're going to see if they can get things up and running yet. But for that introduction, as you all know, the board had a charge at the April 20th board meeting that indicated the Start Time Committee should come back and visit with you in both November and February of this school year to update you on the progress of the committee's work. A couple of things before we get to that point, I think it's important to know that the scope of the work that this committee is going to engage in and has been engaged in is substantial in terms of their commitment to that process. So, as a result, we found it somewhat challenging to find folks to volunteer to be part of this committee, either because of the scope of the work that needed to be involved and the time it was going to take to be able to accomplish this work, or the fact that once the schedule was set up, there were just too many conflicts for people and they couldn't commit because the voice of their specific area that they were representing wasn't going to be at the table often enough to provide valid input and so, they felt the need to pull out. So, it was a challenge to find folks to be part of this committee. With that said, we are highly thankful that we have 15 district employees representing all levels, elementary, middle school and the district office, as well as 12 students, parents, business partners and community members who have agreed to dive into this work and be part of this process. And for that, we're very thankful that they've been giving of their time to do that. The co-chairs for this committee are both Mark Goings and Heather Grant, who's the principal at Manns Elementary. Unfortunately, Heather had a family emergency today and she wasn't able to be with us tonight, so Mark is going to take on the whole presentation, not just his part, and perhaps maybe doing it via paper. So, with that, are we set, ready to go? Maybe you don't have to do paper, Mark. Any questions for me before we turn things over to Mark? Okay?
Well, James is getting that called up there. One thing I would mention to the board as well as to our folks in the media and the community, we are going to look at some times as part of our presentation. I want everybody to know that all of these times can change. And so, we're looking at different avenues that we could go or directions that we could examine further. Just realize the times that we have up there are to try to help us start a conversation, they're not necessarily the final conversation. So, I don't want anybody to go home and say, "Oh, I see that South is going to start at this time," because that's not the case. All right. Ooh, I don't have to go old school. Oh, maybe I do. Okay. Well, as we're starting this journey, we have, as Kay had mentioned, we have many people who are a part of this with us. And one of the things that we have found as a group is for something that seemed so straightforward, there's a ton of complexities to this. And so, one of the things that we're hoping for from tonight is we're going to bring to the board kind of four different looks of what could be and we're hoping that we can start to narrow that scope to what might be right for Eau Claire. Okay? And again, here's our charge. First part up there is research-based. If it was that and nothing else, this would be a much easier task. The research is fairly straightforward as far as expectations of what students should be starting at. However, all the other details on your charge there allude to the fact that the success of a change depends on a lot more than just raw research. Our students have lives outside of school and the whole world does not necessarily revolve around the sleep patterns of an individual. And so, what we're trying to do is we're to look at different possibilities and there is, one of the things our group has found is there is no perfect answer. And so, as part of our conversation is we want to try to look at, well, what seems to make sense for us here in Eau Claire? One of the things, as mentioned, is that it is research-based. Much of the research that we've looked at is medical in nature and American Academy of Pediatrics had several articles that we've looked at. Actually, stepping back a moment, the calendar committee, when they looked at what the calendar should look like for this year, they did a tremendous amount of research and there were many articles and such that they had already found. We looked at those. And if you go down to, let's see, the bottom one there, as you're looking at research, and we live in a society that you could find a research study, an individual one that suggests about anything. So, you start looking at evidence and the number of times a topic comes up. It is almost unanimous that our middle schoolers and high schoolers should be starting later than they are right now. And there's a tremendous amount of research on that and, you know, depending on the study, will be different start time possibilities, but that part's clear. The part that's not as clear is the research on elementary is much quieter. There's not nearly as much research out there. And a lot of that is because traditionally across the United States, if one level starts early than other, it's been the secondary level starting earlier. And so, that's why likely that there's been a lot more research at that level. In many of the studies, if it refers to elementary at all, it refers to all students. As they'll say, like in the American Academy of Pediatrics, they say that all students should start no earlier than 8:30. And then you have other articles in research that is particular to middle school and high school. So, anyway, just realize that the elementary one is not nearly as developed as the secondary. Here's some examples of some start times. We have looked at some of those. The ones in black are all from Wisconsin, roughly, we were looking at roughly the size of Eau Claire. of Eau Claire. Chippewa Falls is definitely their closest neighbor, but they're also smaller. The one in the middle, Woodbury, that's Minnesota. And it's helpful to look at other places, but it's also, we do have to make our own. Because one of the things that makes start times work is very much community-based. The larger a district in general, the more complex start times are, and the much more involved. If you compare us to the Wisconsin ones, we also have the fact that our calendar is now fewer school days for students. And so, you know, that also means that we have more minutes per day for our students compared to most of the other ones from Wisconsin here. That's because we have our built-in PD days and snow days and so on. So. We wanted to start here because not only is this what we're doing, but this schedule, it's important for everybody to realize, has developed over many, many years. And part of what we need to look at, or consider, is how does transportation fit into start times? And one of the reasons why we have five different elementary times there is because one of the efficiencies we can decide that we want to use, and so far right now with this schedule, we have decided we want to maximize what we can do with transportation and limit the cost. And so there's start times that have to be staggered in order to use the same driver, the same bus to go to multiple places. We could decide as a community that, you know what, we want to spread that, we want to not worry about that, have every school start at the same time. That's possible, but then that's part of the checks and balances as far as, well, what are the costs in that? So anyway, we'll come back to this schedule a little bit later as we look at our possibilities. So we looked, there's four options, and the final one is, we could say what we're currently doing. So the original, the top three, all three of those, one commonality they have is secondary, and all three starts later. The question is, as a district, what do we do with elementary? Do we have elementary start before secondary? Do we have them start after secondary, or do we have them all start at the same time? And that's essentially the differences between A, B, and C, is answering that question. Because just as I said, that there's a tremendous amount of research that says that secondary should start later, there's very little research out there that says elementary should start earlier. Okay? But it's kind of like, is the absence of evidence the same as evidence? Or do you take just those few studies and go with that? So anyway, that's part of our decision, is what to do with elementary in these. So the first one, in option A, we have flipping to start times. And so middle school and high school will be roughly starting an hour later in this example. And elementary, in order to make, in order, one of the things that we need to look at is, unless we're going to have everybody start at the same time, there needs to be a time difference between our elementary and our middle school, high school, so that way we can maximize buses to go from one group to the other group. And there's a certain amount of time that is required to do that. And so 7:40 in this example would be as late as we possibly could have elementary start and have middle school and high school start at those times. So as a set, they could all move forward or back. Now, in this example, elementary, starting at 7:40, there's, there would be fewer start times for elementary if they went first, because I am told by Student Transit that if elementary starts first, it's not quite as important to have all those five different times. And Marty, if I mess up anything, let me know. But, you know, one of the things you have to look at there is going to that flip time. Now, we can decide and move everything earlier, like have elementary start at 7:30 and have middle school and high school start earlier, but it is about that $750,000 transportation cost in addition to what we're currently doing. So that is one of the things we'd have to look at, is, is that investment worth, you know, having middle school and high school start later?
I don't know if you can explain where that comes from?
Oh, yes. And by the way, the cost that, I should have started that. The cost that we have on here, we've only started to look at what would be the transportation costs. Now, we have not looked at, like, is it going to be an additional staffing cost for some reason of doing this change or that change? These are just referred to as our bus cost differences. One of the things that happens as far as flipping them, since the elementary school day is by minutes shorter than the secondary school day, in the big scheme of things, what happens is there becomes a larger gap that has to be created during the day to account for that. And so imagine, so if Student Transit has bus drivers who have to sit for a half hour or, you know, 45 minutes just letting their buses idle because of the times don't quite jive, that's going to be a cost. Because it's not enough time to say, "Y'all go home and come back in 45 minutes." There would be a cost in that. So Marty, are there anything else you want to add to that cost?
So what I'd like to do, now let me jump up here.
Marty's from Student Transit, for those who don't know.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Marty. Just up there, yeah, thanks.
So the current schedule is optimized to take advantage of, you know, the more runs we can get out of a single bus, the more efficient we're going to have, and the cheaper the transportation cost. When we flop these around, as Mark mentioned, when we change the times of one block of schools, for instance, the elementary buildings are right at seven hours, 6:55 to seven hours total length. And our high school and middle schools are 7:21 and 7:23 hours and minutes. That creates some issues. So these times that you see up here, we estimated, and again, this, the analysis to get to those numbers, that's a minimum if we change nothing. So the analysis to get there from here, how we got to this 15, 16 school year was about two months of, you know, hard work. We spent several hundred hours getting to the smooth flow, talking to each and every driver individually to get that. So this is, we could do better if we had a little bit more or less constraints on the time, but given in the scenario, this is, we figured we'd run into about 10 buses, or 10 additional routes, 10 additional buses per AM and PM, so 20 total of regular education, and about four special education buses. So that runs up the cost quite quickly.
Does a shorter day allow less on the constraints?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think if we had the flexibility to work with the days, we could sit down and really get this...
A little more optimized, then?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay. Okay, I guess, you have, go ahead.
Well, Marty, don't go away. Can you expand on that? What sort of constraints and, you know, how much money? Like, can you give us some idea what we should be pushing the committee for?
Yeah. That's a great question. In the research, if you look at the examples across the nation where they did this change, transportation was the single biggest challenge to making this work. And it's all cost-driven. There are hundreds of examples out there that list, hey, we saved this amount of money. But again, given the constraints that we were told, you know, is a go-do, we can't adjust the day, the number of minutes in the day. That drives a cost immediately. As soon as you did that flop, you're going to add cost into it. If we were to sit down and take this schedule and optimize it, we could literally give you back the, this is how many minutes in the day to optimize the transportation. But again, that's something that you would have to decide. So we could get to, I think, a cost-neutral, quite frankly, with this. Now, the second, third orders of effect of going longer in the day, having a longer day, so you start early and you go longer in the day, that anecdotally, I don't know how many people we're going to get. We have trouble getting drivers now and monitors, so I don't know if that would exacerbate that problem or not, but that's ours to worry about. And that's anecdotal.
Thank you. Gives me some ideas, okay. Mr. Luganville, sorry.
I have a couple of questions just about the committee there and its work. Has the committee had the chance to speak with individuals, whether it's board members or staff from other school districts that have implemented or may be implementing changes to their start time?
We looked a little bit at, Al Tuna right now is in the process of, looked at their survey they sent out. We're also aware that Chippewa Falls has gone through some of this, between all of our members, we have many members who have either children that are at these other schools or live for their schools. We've done it that way. We haven't formally gone out and like surveyed staff or surveyed parents or anything like that, because part of it, we want to get a greater focus of the general direction that we're going before we do that level of survey. Because, you know, trying to send out four different options, and all the options could all change also, is a little too vague, we felt. So part of the direction we're hoping to get from the board is to start to narrow our scope down, and then we could start to get some of that greater feedback.
Sure. The other question I just had was about the makeup of the committee. And one of my, one of the reasons why I'm really interested in this is kind of, you know, the students' clocks and how they're wired. Is anyone on the committee, or has the committee reached out to like a sleep doctor, not the mattress store, but an actual sleep doctor or like a sleep specialist in town?
Oh, I've not spoken to any sleep doctors directly, but a lot of our research, you know, if we're looking at it from research level, is medical-based, looking at the optimal amount of sleep and the times and our, you know, the REM patterns and all that kind of stuff.
Great, thank you. Maybe we should let, unless there's some burning questions, we can let you finish and continue if you want.
Just finishing up this slide, we can always come back to this one. Some pros that we've had for this is, the elementary time, the people like from our YMCA daycare program felt that as far as, it would shorten that time in the morning for the kind of YMCA daycare kids, which for parents could be a good thing. And then at the end of the day, they'd have more time to do their YMCA day programming at that time. Middle school, high school, an advantage academically is, it gets them closer to that optimal start time. So definite concerns there would be, what does this do to jobs, extracurriculars, that sort of thing, if, you know, if we're not starting any of those things until after 4 o'clock, basically? So. All right. Next one. With this one, essentially, everything just slides back a half hour. And so when you look at the elementary one where it says 8:45, 9:15, that's the understanding of how that original slide showed five different elementary times. This is, it, this is to kind of go along with that idea. We'll have to, if, in sliding everybody back a half hour, we would have to have, we'd have to have some flexibility on those elementary times as far as early times, late times. You know, Marty would then look at traffic patterns for that kind of time of the day and see, you know, is it five minutes this way or that way? So it's not, it's not that this would be an 8:45 and a 9:15 hard starts, but it's kind of the idea that they would have to have the kind of that rolling start that we can get to. Now, again, on this one, if we're just moving everything later, transportation costs would be the same as they are right now. You know, it'd get middle school and high, the advantage is to give middle school and high school that little bit later. It also would get them done with their day a little bit sooner, so those extra parts of life, so the extracurriculars, jobs, and whatever could start sooner. And so there'd be that aspect. Elementary, yes, they'd be starting a little bit later. One of the concerns there would be going back to kind of that YMCA daycare question. So if you have a child who gets dropped off at 7 o'clock, and they're in YMCA daycare for two hours, 15 minutes before learning in school starts, that's a fairly long amount of time for that.
There are many kids that get dropped off at 6:00 in childcare.
Right. And so, you know, those kids could be about ready for a nap by the time school starts. And then there's also the question, at the end of the day, yeah, that 4:15 time is there, but for the late schools, but also by the time they get back from the bus, you know, it becomes 5:00 or after pretty quick for those kids. So those are a few thoughts there. Do you have questions about this one? Oh, I'm sorry. And we did originally look at having everything an hour later. When we did an hour later, you know, it started to feel to the committee like there was so many extra side effects, because that means that secondary doesn't start any of their extracurriculars until after 4:00. Elementary, they're already getting 5:15, 5:30-ish. Also, so, and this is part of all the variables we're looking at. From the transportation end, Marty right now is having a hard time having enough staff to drive the buses. Most drivers would prefer earlier times and later, so if you're already having a time when you're having a hard time filling the buses as is, finding drivers, telling everybody you're going to start, are you going to get done that much later, makes it less attractive to them. So, yes, questions?
I think she's decided to wait.
Now, option C. This would be, in many ways, one of the ideal ones. Everybody starts the same time. This is what a lot of small school districts can do, because if you have one building or two buildings, everybody rides the same bus, you get there, you can start school. 8:30 looks like, looks like that. But again, as far as weighing pluses and minuses, that would mean we'd have to have every bus be a designated bus, every driver be a designated driver. That's $5 to $6 million a year, just to cover it when it's up and running, let alone we'd have to figure out the transition cost of, well, who's paying for the new buses? Who's going to find the new drivers? Things like that. So there'd be those transportation, those transition costs on top of that $5 to $6 million annual cost. But that would allow, from a curriculum standpoint, it would allow everybody to start the same time. You look at staff development, you know, you could have your specialists going from place to place or everything, you know, there'd be many attractive things about starting at the same time. So. And our last one is where we're at right now. To keep elementary, or keep middle school and high school first, and our elementary's just going second.
I have to say, this was informative. I didn't quite realize the wide range of start time dates for, times for the elementaries.
So when we look at this, a few parameters we looked at. The transportation parameters, we're going to stay the same. That's one of the things that our committee is operating under. We didn't look at, well, what if we expanded the walking distance? Or, hey, let's have all the elementary, middle school, high school people all ride the same bus together. We didn't look at those things. Just as like with the calendar, we just started our newly designed calendar. We're only a couple of months into it. One of the things that Marty had mentioned is, well, if we got to change the number of minutes in a day, you know, that could do some stuff with bus times. But as soon as you start changing the minutes of the day, that starts changing what the calendar is that we've developed. So those are two of the parameters we looked at with that. And now we're ready for next steps. The first one there, that's what we're really needing from the board, is for you to look at those four general ideas. Again, we can fine-tune them, you know, five minutes this way, 10 minutes that way, sort of thing, or what we need, but we need to have an idea of, okay, these, you know, this one is essentially out, or these two or three, definitely focus more on those, get, you know, get more feedback on that, which ones you want to take the community, and so on. So, questions?
Okay, board, you can discuss, ask questions. Commissioner Jiang.
Okay, so Marty has said, if the days were shorter, the cost would go down significantly. What are the negatives of having a shorter day but longer calendar year?
Marty's not qualified for answering that.
Nope.
Anyone?
That was largely, when you look at all of the hours and the work that went into the calendar from last year, that was a discussion with the calendar committee came up with last year, is that there are so many benefits that we believe are to come to fruition through the calendar we have now with the built-in staff development days, with the built-in snow days. There's all those benefits. And so... And so those, um, I'm not, um, that'd be something, when you, when as a board, we approved that last year. And actually, I've been in enough committee meetings that I also know that there's area school districts that are looking to declare saying, you know, how in the world did you guys do that? Because that looks, like that would be the calendar they'd want, so.
I don't want to, uh, to downplay the committee, the calendar committee's work there. They did an excellent job. I'm just looking at pros and cons and possible, uh, solutions to this because I really want to see this change.
May, may I kind of address that? I, I, I feel like these should have been done together, which is why I had a problem with it last year, uh, last time. But for me, what, so suppose we did shorten the days and lengthened the calendar year. Essentially, let's assume that it's cost neutral, like you suggested. That in a sense saves us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Why not use that toward professional development for other days for professional development? And then we're doing the right things for the kids and that we still have time set aside for professional development at the beginning of the year. To me, that, that's, uh, something that we should be looking at. Something along those lines. Commissioner Johnson.
So I was at the football bank when I came just for this and I'm sure some people are probably thinking, boy, this would have been nice to get on the agenda in October before Wendy came back. So Plan A, I just wrote grr because I think the exact same thing as Rich. The, um, so when we go up to parameters, um, you know, kind of the, the assumptions in the very beginning of your slide presentation, the first thing that came to my mind is that the, the adults and the community will adapt. Because if the schools say that the kids are coming in school during these hours, then that's the, the hours the kids are gonna be in school. And certainly, some of those barriers like, um, after-school jobs and extracurriculars will work themselves out. We certainly can learn from Chippewa and other schools that have done it. We play Chippewa in pretty much everything, even our middle schools who barely travel, play Chippewa schools. And so it clearly can be done to accommodate extracurriculars. So I feel like those things will work out. And I was actually glad that, to hear that maybe the, um, the after-school care providers would be better for them to have a bigger block of time to do their kind of clubby kind of stuff after school. For me, well, clearly, option C is out unless the, the dollar fairy is gonna rain down and prevent our need for a referendum. Uh, option C just isn't an option. So we can, I feel like, thank you for putting it up there so we can say, yep, that clearly isn't an option. I think for me, B is clearly out too. It's been a while since I've had a kindergartner, but I owned a dance studio where little kindergartners came after school and they were our highest dropout rates because elementary principals can probably tell us they are so tired by the time they're ending now. I can't even imagine keeping them till four fifteen. They would be nodding off at their desks and falling asleep in the bus seats on the way home. Those elementary kids just, they cannot be there till four fifteen, they cannot be on buses till after five. They're gonna be starving and cranky and just impossible to teach. So I feel like we're looking at some version of A or doing nothing. And so we go back to A and I'm with Rich. When we asked for this, well, I started asking for it six years ago and I know this because my kids are six years apart and my son is a sophomore and my daughter was a sophomore at the time and I was hoping it would be in place for her. But we, you know, talked about this a year and a half ago. And frankly, I share Rich's frustration that all of that great work was done for the needs of professional development, which certainly is important, but I feel at the expense of students. Because clearly, all the research hundred percent says that half of our student population is going to school an hour or two early. So we need to make it work. And if that means we expand the number of contracted days for staff, we do it. If that includes paying them extra per diem or not, I don't know. I've said it before, as an attorney, I have to do continuing legal education and I have to do it on my own time or I have to bill outside of the traditional day when I'm doing CLEs instead. So however we make it work, um, I think we make it work. And right now, going to referendum and we're talking about what we're gonna add, I feel like it needs to be some sort of a compromise. So we're not gonna just say, we're going to do this and keep these extra long days when we could have looked last year and said, hey, we know this is on the horizon. We could have packaged them together, um, all together. So I'm glad that we have an ideal calendar right now for professional development, but it's not ideal for kids. So there has to be some sort of compromise. And we have to decide how much, if anything, we're willing to add to the budget, if ever, if the board is really adamant about doing what's right for kids.
Commissioner Boil.
Very similar to what the previous speaker just got done saying. Except the one thing I want to point out is, is the priority of the district. Whatever the transport, uh, the start time is going to be decided, I'm hoping that we decide based on the priority of the district. And already, one topic that came out consistently throughout the three public forums that we heard was the quality of education that needs to be kept or even better. So if it means adding more dollar to the transportation, do it. Otherwise, we need to come back to a more realistic approach and that is to add the requirement of affordable. So far, we are looking at three requirements that I, I can see. A, efficient transportation and, and starting time. B, are we being effective at sending our children to school? But we were left out with the affordable. Maybe we need to push affordable to be the first criteria. And affordable aligned with the budget cut. If you were to look at money only, then you need to push affordable as the main, the number one criteria for making a decision for start time. But it does not appear that that's what the public are speaking about. The public wants strong education for our student. And if research back it up, that time change will increase performance, then I will push for performance. Add more money.
Further comments?
President Spindler.
Oh, go ahead, Jason.
I have a, a comment regarding this. I'm looking at the schools, specifically the ones that offer a lot of clubs, like North and Memorial. And, um, we're going to offer something like option A. I wonder if that will discourage students from participating in after-school activities because school will end at three fifty-eight or something like that. I'm sipping, I'm speaking from my own experience because when I did cross-country last year with the schedule, I believe it was like two forty-five, that's when school ended. Sometimes practice would end around four, thir, four thirty, five o'clock. And if we were to fix, go to a schedule like this, then practice will end five twenty, five thirty, maybe six o'clock. So that might be taxing for some of the students. So that might discourage them from participating in extracurriculars. And I think that's something to keep in mind. And, um, a question that I want to ask is, have you guys been able to get any, um, information regarding schools that have like this kind of schedule? And if their extracurriculars went down after they implemented a schedule like this?
One of the issues we have as far as extracurriculars, thank you for asking, is, um, it's one thing if like,
Jason, you can turn your thing off.
Say a sport, you know, they practice for the first hour and a half, two hours right after school. If that was the case, that's one thing. But one of the things in many of our schools is there's like the early practice right after school and then you have the kids who an hour and a half later, because of gym space or whatever, practiced that second wave. And so one of the concerns as far as that goes is that's gonna put that later wave, so much later, is that going to reduce the participation rate? And that's something we don't know because there's, there's not a lot of districts like us that, that have some of those constraints. But that would be one of the questions. If we were gonna pursue this one, we would need to survey students, parents, the community, and ask some of those types of questions. As, you know, as far as if we went to a time like this, um, what would that do to your, um, to your view of those extracurriculars? So thank you.
Uh, Mark, just a follow-up. Do you know what time Chippewa Falls ends their day, their high school?
Their high school?
Is it on there? I know it was start, I don't remember if it was.
Yes, their high school starts at eight thirty and ends at three forty-five.
Yeah, so they're eight, what, uh, twelve, thirteen minutes different or something? There's our shortened a day time, thirteen minutes. That's questions. Uh, Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
I just, I just want to bring up the fact about the research that's not there for elementary or preschool. You know, middle, middle school kids and high school kids are gonna have a bigger voice and they're gonna complain more than little kids who are put in the car and they go where they're told, in a way. I mean, not everybody. But I know in spending time at six AM or quarter, ten to six in the morning in childcare for kids that were having difficulty, that's a tough time. And then by, you know, they're losing it by nine o'clock and I, we were building nap times in childcare for the kids to have a nap at that time. So, um, I don't like to see one at the expense of the other, uh, in a way. And I just wanted to bring that up.
Going back to the earliness of the elementary end, so you look at the seven forty start time. Marty tells me that as far as busing elementary kids, they try to have it less than, forty-five minutes is about the max.
Forty-five minutes, fifty minutes, somewhere around that.
Right. And so then you have parents who are already starting to wonder, okay, it's dark at this time and do I want to have my third grader waiting for the bus, you know, before seven?
I'm, oh, okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to add a clarifying point to Joe's question earlier about this sleep doctor, not the mattress doctor, but the sleep doctor. There is both a nurse and a doctor on the committee, correct? That have been able to speak to the committee about, um, the medical research behind, behind sleep patterns for children's and adolescents. So although we haven't reached out to specific sleep doctors, there are medical experts on the committee that have advised the committee about those items.
Yes, Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
So if, if, if we all, if it was a little bit later or if it was a community conversation, would we get more parents transporting kids to school as opposed to not? I mean, because we haven't had that deep conversation yet either.
I'm not sure what you're asking about transferring to school, I didn't quite get that.
Well, I'm just saying, if, if we tweak it later, um, and build it in when most families have to be at work, would we get more parents bringing their kids to school? We, you know, have more contact with teachers, more people connected to their schools as opposed to riding on a bus? Would that, that wouldn't change the cost though?
Is that what you mean?
Hmm?
If we did everything later like option B?
Or do you mean flipping?
But we would, we would still be running the same buses.
Yes, Emily, go ahead, turn on your thing.
Uh, one thing that I've been thinking about is, um, next semester, I have senior privilege and I have the chance to, to not go to school first hour, to go to school. And one of the things I've been thinking about is, well, if I go, if I stay home and I get an extra hour of sleep or, you know, even study at home, um, or, you know, you just, you're not, you're not at school you might sleep in and, um, you, you're not, that's like an extra hour of studying that the students aren't getting. So either they're not going to study that extra hour when they get home or they're gonna stay up later and then they're really not getting an extra hour of sleep anyway.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Okay, I have a feeling you guys need, still need more feedback from us, I do not know. Other board members. I'm not sure enough of what enough board members think here, I can't summarize, I know two of us.
I'll, I'll go back to, um, restate what I said earlier. I'd rather see that we put more money or the right money to the right place and do not allow efficiency gets in the way of educating our student. In other words, right now, we are financially crunched. We are not in a position to add more dollar to transportation. We need to be able to preserve the dollar that will go to teach our students. So I'm for option D, current system.
Commissioner Jiang.
I would like to see, I too feel like we cannot put in any more money or we can't find money from anywhere else to, uh, to put into transportation. So if, uh, shortening the day and extending the calendar year is going to help, uh, reduce that burden and get this, uh, later start time for, uh, especially high schoolers implemented, I am for that.
Okay, others? Uh, I'll just kind of, um, maybe reply that Charles, I agree, put the money in the right place. And to me, if I was gonna spend extra money, I would spend it on instructional related needs, which includes staff development. And, uh, so if we were gonna spend an extra seven fifty thousand dollars, let's spend it on staff development rather than transportation need and do the right thing for our kids at the same time. Okay, I don't know, uh, if I can give you any more information here. Is this helpful for the committee? Can we come back with, uh, some ideas with what we just said about shortening the day? Can you come back? I mean, obviously, there's an interest still in option D, just keeping it the same, so don't throw that off the table, obviously. I don't know if you, can you, you want to ask us some questions of things you'd like to know?
Well, one thing, as far as shortening the day, um, to my understanding, it's not the committee's decision to change the calendar. And so that's something that we would need to be directed to do.
Yes, go ahead.
So if you're going to shorten the day, the calendar committee would have to work in concert with the start time committee. So you, you'd have to convene the two committees together.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson, go ahead.
I was trying to keep a tally and I don't know if I heard Commissioner Luganville and Commissioner Hamburg Boyle necessarily take sides on a plan, but I, what I think I heard was, I think Commissioner Jiang and I are on the same page that A is perhaps ideal, but we're gonna not accept your assumptions that we can't change the minutes and up days or the money to do it. So, um, and it sounds like maybe President Spindler is kind of on the same, like we, A would be ideal, but if we're gonna spend the money, let's not spend it on figuring out the professional development piece. So I think we're maybe saying the same things. And I guess, some of the frustration is we were told the start time, the calendar committee wasn't gonna look at start times because they were gonna deal with the calendar first, but now we have a totally different committee. I don't, I think what the, the start time committee needs to bring to us is, if some version of A will explore that as options, but how could we do it without spending seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So whether it's a combination of the bus folks tell us how much difference in times could, you know, save us that kind of money or, um, and then throw it back to, bring it back to us or talk to the calendar committee and say, okay, you know, with that much savings, we can do this, but what can we do to save this number of minutes or this number of days?
And if you need to work with the calendar committee, I'd say do it, that's fine. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
I, I don't see how this can come to any end fruition without both entities working together. And I also just am concerned of pushing those, the little ones an hour at seven forty in the morning. I mean, there are some three-year-olds that come at seven forty in the morning. You know, I'm just, I just am not sold on switching them as being the kids that are coming that.
Commissioner Johnson.
Does early learning have to be aligned with elementary? Isn't that basically its own entity? I mean.
We always.
For transportation concerns, we would, we would need to deconflex.
For transportation concerns, we would, we would need to deconflate the starts of the elementary buildings with the ELP, with the high school, middle school. So we would work with our staff to find out what are the optimum times. Now, given the flexibility to possibly adjust those ELP times, that, that would definitely help us from a cost perspective.
I'd want to know specifically too what that $750,000 was and how it aligns up.
Approximately ten routes in the morning, ten routes in the afternoon, gen ed, and about four routes of special needs, both morning and evening. That's in general.
And that, that's more than now?
Correct, that's above and beyond what we have now.
I guess maybe I'd like to see that comparison.
Do you want to describe the efficiencies in the different elementary times and how you get efficiencies there?
Okay, so, you know, I'm kind of new at this, but Jim and I did this for, I'm not kidding you, probably, like I said, several hundred hours after the calendar committee came back and said, go do. And we started out with probably, it's going to cost a couple hundred thousand bucks at least, adding routes. And it took, it took us over the course of the summer as well, working with each individual driver to come up with, how do we do this? How do we best optimize? And we tried to preserve each of the elementary buildings, preserve their time, their start times. So that was a very difficult thing to do. So you pull, and it's not just as simple as, okay, well, what, what does it cost? You pull that thread and that thread is connected to twenty-eight other buildings in the district. Because what we, what the calendar, where what our start time committee didn't really address was the, the fact that we do the parochial schools, the private schools, the, and the ELP. So those were really off the table for discussion. So although this kind of packages up and looks pretty nice, that knee bone is connected to the shin bone and how do we work around those, those items to, to really optimize the transportation?
And the reason it's hard is because of the constraints.
Absolutely.
Time constraints.
We were hands tied and feet tied and
Yeah.
we're expected, expected to bob in the water, so.
Fit in the box, yeah, yeah. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
Does the, does the dynamic of serving Al tuna, I mean, does that throw anything in there?
Not really, because when we accepted Al tuna two and a half years ago, they pretty, they pretty much came to us with the equipment. We had the drivers, so we pretty much service Al tuna as a separate entity and don't tell them that because they're all in one team, we're all one team. That's right.
But I do know they're looking at switching times.
That's correct.
Yeah. Commissioner Luganville.
I think it's important to note too that Al tuna is, they're surveying right now while their committee is doing its work and almost before some things that the committee is doing. And I think that might be a valuable piece that we're kind of missing the link on to have not actually surveyed elementary, middle and high school families.
Commissioner Johnson.
I did hear at one of our forums that they felt like things are being stirred up maybe unnecessarily and so, you know, I think the committee will have to weigh whether, like you said, if you go too soon to get input, you know, you're just getting people riled up for no reason. So maybe, and maybe not.
And not to dissuade the, not to dissuade the comparisons, just be cautious and careful about comparing apples to apples. In other words, Al tuna, the building sets, you know, they're working with just a few buildings and they're in close proximity. And, you know, we need not look any further than the complexity of two rivers, the, all the different buildings in the different geographic areas, and that's really, that takes time. And it, you know, golden slippers and.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Commissioner John is next.
I'd like to echo what Wendy had just said, but I'd like to add that we are also in the process of getting information and for a referendum. I don't want to be overloading the voters with more surveys that are not related to the referendum.
Good point. Did you have any more? You had your line on.
I always like to say the amazing fact that we cover over 200 square miles, so yes, we're very aware, yeah. It's amazing fact.
Okay, so I think we go ahead and look at the other possibilities, give you more flexibility. And if we need to talk to calendar committee, we do it and we see, see what can be worked out that way too.
Does the board want all of that to wait until the February date? Or do you want us to look at some options for A and look at those as a standalone sometime before that date?
Yeah, if you feel you need to come to us, you know, is that what you're really asking, to come to us at halftime?
It might, I mean, for one thing, it might lose the essence of it all if we try to get down to complete zero. So it might be, okay, we can do this and it's going to cost 250,000 and these are the benefits or costs.
If, yeah, if basically you're asking if, well, we've gone this little bit and we need some more input from the board before we go too far, is that basically what you're saying?
Pretty much.
That would be fine, that would absolutely be fine.
And I think that charge was you're also supposed to come up like a plan to implement it. And so, you know, if you need, you know, kind of to narrow down what the, the goal is, you need time to work on that plan, to launch the plan.
Right, for example, for to implement a 9:15 start time for elementary is a lot different than a 7:40 start time for elementary and things like that, so, thank you.
And this would help us too, if you came in December, if we're still, you know, we're still thinking about referendum, if there were costs that we thought maybe we should think about, so. Anything else from board members? Okay, go ahead.
Just kind of a point of clarification, if we're looking to bring the calendar committee and the start time committee together to start down this road, chances of there being a plan presented in February are going to be very slim. This is a very different direction than what that committee was going, because now we're going and looking at what the calendar committee spent years to propose for you to put into place for this year. And so to tweak that and include the start time committee, that, that's just not going to happen overnight. And we're talking to a lot of people between the two committees to get those folks together.
Commissioner Johnson.
Well, I think this, this board has been very respectful of including staff input and staff voice, probably more so than I would say the majority of districts in the state. So if you have to do a smaller representation of the calendar committee, you know, to get some things done, well then, you know, maybe those people just need to provide their input in a written format, or you need to choose a few representatives from the calendar committee. Because again, going back to a year and a half ago, we were under the impression it was going to be the same committee, or I think we probably would have said, no, do it all at the same time, so, you know. We don't have to bargain the calendar anymore and I, and I don't want to, you know, make the staff think that we don't value their work, but we can't always do everything through the ideal process that we would like to do it.
Did you have more, Kay?
Yep. So I've heard several times from multiple board members that, that this was supposed to have been a joint thing between the calendar committee and the start time committee and that the expectation was that this was going to be brought together as one. But yet, the calendar committee had specific direction from the board that that needed to be separate. That you didn't want the start time committee information mixed into the calendar committee, which is why it was separate.
Well.
And we shared that multiple times because we were directed not to include those two. And so just because I know that there's always multiple people watching who are part of all of this rolling out, I would feel like I wasn't doing justice to them if I didn't share that that was not the direction we were given.
Well, I guess we can go back historically to the direction, but I, I was under the impression initially that it was going to do just calendar, not start times in the first one, and it changed start times in the first proposal. So, and that's okay, I mean, that's what happened, but the initial was that it was going to change the calendar, not times. And then it came with a change of times in the initial one, rather than the second was supposed to look at times. That is my recollection of the history, so. That's where we're at though, so let's see if we can do what's best for kids and keep this professional development that we like, all right? Let's see if we can do that, so. Okay, and just, and we'll see what, you know, if you need more guidance on how this is going to work, if you have troubles, just let us know and we'll, we'll figure something out. Okay, thank you everyone, thank you for all your work. Okay, good discussion. All right, so now, next on our, oh, public comment on this, any public comment on this topic? I almost forgot. No, okay, all right, all right, thank you. Okay, so next we had a community forums. We were just, in agenda setting, we were talking about, well, I don't know, can we pull up the calendar? Were you trying to set up from budget committee, Patty, could we put that up there? I guess it's an attachment here. Just going to show you that and discuss what we talked about. There we go. So this is what the budget committee was thinking of for a calendar, so we are going to, in the next budget committee meeting, we are going to talk about the forums and how that might impact referendum, but during agenda setting, we thought, you know, we should talk about this as a board immediately after the community forums a little bit, just to reflect a little bit on, on how it went and some thoughts on that, and then the budget committee can take it up. So, but there's our schedule and, you know, we're trying to decide on the fourth whether to go to referendum and what it would be with a specific proposal on January 4th. So you can see the budget committee will talk about the community forums and impact, and then it'll come back to the board from our discussion in the budget, and then we'll discuss strategic plan and impact on referendum and so forth. So, so the budget committee will take up this, but actually, you know, hearing from the board going into budget committee might be helpful at this point too. So we thought we'd have a reflection on that. Can you pull up the, what was at the community forum, the forum that was used by our facilitator and the topics that were discussed? We can pull that up. There we go, we just moved down a little bit. So participants, after learning about the budget and reflecting and asking questions about our budget, the second part was looking at this piece and, was looking at this piece and the different categories and just getting a feel from those at the forum, what they thought was important to them, important to the community in terms of the values of the community. And I, I feel like there were some themes that came out, but we can talk about that tonight. And maybe from the facilitator, he will maybe look at it and can give us what he found as themes through there. I'll have to get the whole of mic still on that. But Patty was, did a great job taking minutes and summarizing many of the comments and all the comments, I believe, at these three forums, and so the board members were given those to look through and, and get some ideas from that. So I'm just going to leave it open now, see if board members want to discuss, reflect on this process and also things they think they got out of it. Commissioner Luganville.
Well, I want to give a nice plug to Clear Vision for doing this with us and partnering with us on this. I'm curious if Clear Vision with these Value House activities and forums, if they have a type of debriefing format that they do, maybe they have the facilitator meet with representatives from the group. And I know Mike, I'm assuming Mike is meeting with staff in the district, but it might be a positive, might be positive to have him actually meet with the board or talk with us.
That's a good idea, I'll, we could get in touch with him, yeah. Commissioner John.
Okay, my comment is going to be more towards the forum. I don't know if anybody else tallied it up, but I, I tallied up anything that has to do with recruitment and retention from, from just this forum. And there was over thirty comments related to recruitment and retention. And the second part, which was the part that Mike broke down to see what the community members valued, out of the twenty-three groups, seventeen of those group referenced recruitment and retention. That's, that's in, over, that, that is the, for me, over, that is what they want.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson.
After the first forum, I had actually expressed a kind of a hope that we would be able to parcel out a little bit the makeup of the different groups. Because we, we obviously have a very good connection with our staff providing input to the budget, I mean, that's how the budget is created. But just observation of the, the composition of the three forums, it was clearly at least half, if not close to three quarters at times at some of the, the groups, that it was staff. So, you know, while maybe three quarters of, of the comments are retention, if that, if it's the same three quarters as the staff, I don't know if that tells me what the non-parent, non-staff, you know, general community thinks. I think that it was encouraging that there wasn't a lot of naysayers. I didn't really hear anybody say, you don't need a referendum. Everyone who showed up clearly seemed in support of it. So I'm hopeful that the, the general public trusts that we're doing the best we can and we're going to make the right decisions. But I think that we need to take the, kind of the results a little bit with a grain of salt, because it was kind of like preaching to the choir. You know, it's, it was people who are very vested in this process giving us input. The thing that I took away was across the board, you know, I tried very hard to, to seek out the non-staff, you know, just some different community members, and it was really impossible for them to choose, like what's most important. I had one gal at the last forum, was like, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to choose from those twenty-some needs because you can't. You can't say that some, you know, that, that art and music is more important than preschool or, you know, whatever. Pick any of those twenty things on there. So I, the thing that was really heartening was that even people at the table who identified themselves as fiscal conservatives were like, you have to. The funding formula is broke, you have to go to referendum. And so to me, it's not, it was, they don't really want to just maintain the status quo or cut. They want to see us really do what's right for kids and add some things back in.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
I, I think too what you said was, was what I kind of noted as well, but I tried to seek out other, others that were not educators or district employees. My piece was standing at the Chamber Expo and the people that came up to me, which was a diverse group of people that were, every single one were in support of our schools. And they said, you're going to referendum? I said, well, we're in the discussions for referendum right now. They were supportive of that. And three people came up to me and were readily telling me their political, how they sway politically and certainly saying how in support of public education they were. So I, I think in forums like that, that was telling, to go from that to go to the forums gave me this maybe a bigger picture, I don't know, but it was, I didn't hear one thing negative.
Commissioner Wu.
My personal observation tells me that we are asking the frontline staff their opinions about what's important, what's effective in terms of educating our students. And the two things that stood out, A, they now understand the limitation of our teaching ability or teaching our students' responsibility is directly tied with the income from the state. So A, we are able to communicate that, that message across. B, the participant who were at the forums, their priorities seem to align with what the strategic plans result are indicating. So three, it tells me now that since we have the frontline people, since we have the strategic plan result that are all pointing out to the same direction, the next challenge is for the community to understand that we cannot afford not to have a referendum. So how can we get the message across to the voters? If only one of us who were at the forum can influence or communicate the same message to another two voters, that is the goal that we need to, to shoot for. Because the forum clearly tells me that we cannot afford. Because the forum clearly tells me that we cannot afford to lose the value of education in this community, and we did our job by informing the public about the need and the consequence of not providing that quality of education. So, I'm very pleased.
Thank you, Charles. My observations, one, I think it was, hoping that that is useful, but I think it was really useful just to get the word about, about our budget. I mean, just from an educational information viewpoint, I think it was really useful, even for staff that were there, as well as the press was there, too, to some extent. So, I think just for that, it was really, really useful. What I had observed, some of the things that kind of surprised me or not, was some of the discussions about helping lower-income students. I noticed a number of tables were talking about that. Another was, I didn't expect it either, was the, about the innovation zones or innovative programming. I get a feeling in our community that there's a thirst for us to do more in terms of, of that, in some way, doing things more innovatively. So, I was, I was, I was quite interested and surprised about some of that. Some of the things I was not surprised about hearing about staff or facilities came up a lot, too. But those couple were surprising to me. Other comments or questions or about the forums? Joe.
One thing I noticed, and I, too, like many of you, tried to seek out the people that didn't have a badge on, and was invited numerous times. People said, you know, "You guys have to come to," we were invited, we've been invited now after these forums to at least three Rotary Clubs, different businesses, different exchange groups. That's kind of, I think, the next step in terms of getting the word out about this. Like you said, we're preaching to the choir with a lot of it. But this is, the way the presentation was set up, the way Abby delivered it, was incredibly effective, I thought. And I'm really glad Community Television was there, so we can share that link, and it'll be something that we need to take on a horse and pony show around the community to the people that would not show up or otherwise, you know.
Okay. I think, Commissioner Johnson.
Well, I just want to ask the question, how are we going to decide what things to add? We know that next year, we need $6.5 million more to do exactly the same thing, but how do we decide what additional things go in? How, you know, I just, I think it was the City Council just last week was talking about their market compensation study and how to, to hold, you know, to bring up those below-market salaries. So, how do we decide what, you know, how much that is? And I, I see that's coming in December, which is like the very last piece, but also then, you know, you know, how we decide, maybe the Athletic Council's gonna tell us what, you know, what school fees should be. We've heard a lot about that in the past few years, that, you know, we're, our kids are paying $100, $200, and $300, where other schools are paying $25 and $50. So, what is the right amount? You know, are there field trips that support the curriculum that were cut years ago that, you know, teachers really see, like, "Oh, that, that experience of exposing kids at Beaver Creek, or at the museum, or wherever it might be, is really missing now from the curriculum, and I can't as effectively, you know, teach that." So, how do we add, how do we know what those things, what gets added back in? And I think there's support amongst this Board and the community. And so, between now and, and the end of December, the beginning of January, how do we come up with that dollar amount?
Commissioner Jean.
Well, to, to speak to that, what I would like to see added, if we all agree with the notion that the teachers are the biggest factor in the classroom of student success, then we should, being that compensation has been frozen forever now, I would like to see something built in to, to move our staffs down the salary schedule.
Okay. That's something we did hear a fair amount of. So, in terms of the process question, really, what I think we were thinking of, and if you look at this, that the Budget Committee, along with Administration, would draft a resolution, and we have it here by December 14th. The question, I think, for the Board is, let's say the Budget Committee meets November 9th, do you want the Budget Committee to pick out those things that it thought the community supports the most, and bring those to you, and comment on them, and change them, like, say, on the November 16th date? That's one way we could do it, and we could ask Administration for estimates for some of those things. You know, there's multiple ways to do it. If you do it more formally, you know, a, a resolution comes before the Board, and you amend that resolution. That's getting kind of close to the deadline to do it that way. So, I would, I would, I would, I'd be open to hearing comments about that process of how, how to do that. Commissioner Johnson.
Well, I think certainly the, the Budget Committee should have kind of the first go at it, and obviously, staff and administrators are gonna have to provide the numbers and all that sort of thing. So, I, because of what I heard at the, the forums, I don't, people were forced to choose two or three items. And so, they're, just because, you know, they're, right, but, but just because only, you know, they only had, they could only choose, like, three top priorities, doesn't mean that they wouldn't also support funding some of those other things. So, I wouldn't want the Budget Committee to, to limit, you know, you might prioritize them through, with the help, with the, with the staff, but I wouldn't want you to be limited to just the things that came from the community forum, because people had, you know, it was basically, "Choose, choose, choose, one or two items." And if, it was, that's a very different exercise from saying, "Which things should be included? Which things we should add?" Because maybe people would've chose 10 or 15 things. So, you know, maybe tying kind of some, you know, a range of costs to, you know, all of the needs that have been identified, and then prioritizing, it's almost a reverse cut list, you know? Here's the things that we would like to add back first, this is, you know, through the Budget Committee, through Administration, through the staff, here's the most important things we want to add back, and, you know, bring them back. And that, by getting those, that concrete list out there, I think that we'll hear more from parents in particular, but also the larger community about, "Yeah, that's worth including," or not.
Okay, so essentially, you have a list of the many possibilities, and what are the, I'll get you a second, Commissioner Vu, just to recap, I think what you said was, a list of possibilities, what would be those expenditures for those, and eventually, I mean, basically, what we're gonna have to do is weigh what we think the public will support versus property taxes and so forth. That's ultimately what the Board's gonna have to weigh. But you're asking basically for a list, and what are the estimates for those, essentially. Right? Okay, Commissioner Vu.
My first reaction is that we already passed the budget for '15, '16, and the information we receive through the public forums are twofold. A, we cannot redo what we already decided to do. B, this information, I, to me, is just a way for us to check, to see if what we, what information we'll be using to justify going with the referendum, the different package that we decide, match with what the community wants. So, that will help us be more confident at pushing the referendum with the package that we tentatively looked at. So, it's not a way of doing things with scratch, using the information to guide the, the planning? No, we already have the plan, just using information to see if we are on the same page.
When you say we already have the plan, what, what do you mean there? Refer that to me, tell me.
Well, we look at option A, option B, option C in the package. And I think the committee, the Budget Committee, looked at more favorably of one package over the other two packages.
Yes, and I think the question here is, does, do they want to, based on option C, I believe, look more favorably at it, do we want to modify it with any of these things, I think is the question, if I understand right. Commissioner Jean.
Yes, that's how I took it, and, uh, let's see, I think we could look at all of the lists that we want to add, find out from Administration what it will cost, but ultimately, I want to come back to the Board from the Budget Committee on the 16th, to, to figure out if that is, our list is what the Board would agree.
Okay, that's a good point. Commissioner Hancock Boyle.
And it needs to tie to the strategic plan and to student, and the goals, and the student, and relevance in student achievement, and socially emotional growth. So, I, I, I want to know how, if we want to thrive, how that's going to impact the budget? What are the pieces there that will impact the budget? And that can only come from those who are leading and in the trenches in our district, right?
I think with that said, it'll be really important, some, like, TNL is at our Budget Committee to help guide us and decide what's the most impact on our students when we, when we look at these things. Commissioner Hancock Boyle.
And there's some specific things that I've talked about since I got on the Board, about compensation pieces that are broken, those people who have been, as you said, frozen, and that we hire people at a higher compensation. That needs to be fixed. I mean, that is one thing that has to be fixed, and it's gonna cost some money.
Does the Board want to give the Budget Committee a list of things now? Or would, I mean, because we got a big list. I, I think we have a good idea of some of the things we're at the top to consider. Would you want to give us something more specific now, or do you want the Budget Committee to just work on that and develop it? And I know a couple, like the one you just mentioned, certainly.
But, but that's tied to the compensation study, too, which we'll hear about.
Sure. I, I think probably what's gonna have to happen, because that's coming pretty late, is we're gonna have to get an estimate of, you know, for example, let's say you were interested in having a staff make some progress in their professional career with pay, in, say, lanes or whatever, the old lanes. What would they have gotten in those lanes, and use that toward whatever the new plan would've said? Something along those lines, an estimate.
What is that gonna cost?
Yeah, right. So, do you, are you comfortable with the Budget Committee taking a stab at this and coming back? Okay, okay, we will do that. So, we'll, we'll need Budget people and TNL people there to, to help us with that quite a bit, so. Anything else on this topic? It was, I, I think it was, for me, it was really useful to go to these and hear from the community. I hope it was for everyone else. Yes, okay. All right, thank you. Public comment? Anything on that? Losing people as it gets later here. Okay, thank you. All right, so, next is Policy 655.1, Activity Passes. We'll hopefully have a first reading on that. Any comments from policy and governance on this? Commissioner Luganbill?
It's actually kind of funny, this came as, I put up a graphic on my school board Facebook promoting the Platinum Pass, and someone, a constituent commented and said, "I'm an adult with a disability, and I'm wondering if the Board has ever considered having adults with disabilities within the district be eligible for the free lifetime Platinum Pass." So, that was a good idea, and brought to the Committee, and that's why we're here.
All right, interesting where these things start.
Yeah, it's, you know, to me, I think it's a positive way for us to do some bridge building, an easy, an easy change.
Do we have other comments from Board members on this? Otherwise, we'll go ahead with a first reading. Commissioner Johnson.
Well, I just, I just, I think I asked this question some point in the past, that there isn't going to be, like, any, there isn't now, you know, you don't have to bring your birth certificate in to prove you're a senior citizen, for example, that if people show up and say, "I'm a senior citizen," that we're just taking them at their word. So, the, the same kind of process, if people self-identify as someone with a disability who's, you know, wants to come to the schools and, you know, maybe needs that economic benefit, that, it's basically like the old honor shop where you put your quarter in. So, are you guys too young for that, by the way? Do you remember honor shops? Okay, so anyway, it's on the honor system.
I'm not old. Anything else? Commissioner Hancock Boyle.
I'll just make a comment, that we have a community that puts more life jackets than are out there. I think it'll be fine.
Right, good point. Anything else? Anything else? Okay, let's see if we can get a first reading. Could I have a volunteer for a first reading of this? Sure, Commissioner Luganbill.
655.1, Activity Passes. Activity passes allow the holder entrance to all district-sponsored, regular-season athletic contests, and fine and performing arts activities. Oh, I'll do it on my laptop now, if it turns on.
I have it open.
Okay. All right. Family activity passes are available for purchase. This pass allows admittance for family members and guardians who live within the household of ECASD students. Employees eligible to purchase activity passes include regular employees, interns, people with emergency contracts, noon hour supervisors, CISA employees assigned 100% to the Eau Claire Schools, long-term substitutes, and regular substitutes working more than 50 days who receive the higher rate of pay either during the present year or the year prior. Passes issued will be Eau Claire Area School District passes and honored by North and Memorial High Schools. Residents of the ECASD who are 62 or older, and adults with disabilities, will be admitted free to school events by presenting their Platinum Activity Pass. This lifetime pass may be obtained at the Superintendent's Office or at Memorial and North High Schools. In addition, all ECASD high school students will receive free admission to events with their current student ID.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Luganbill. Are there any comments from the public on this pass? No comments tonight?
Carolyn, say something.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So, the part that speaks to substitutes working more than 50 days who receive the higher weight, raid, wage, that, I don't believe that's in play any longer, since we moved daily substitutes to teachers-on-call, there's just one wage, there isn't a, in the past, when they were our employees, there was a tracking of 50 days, and then you'd get a higher wage, but that, that's not the case any longer.
Oh. We just read it.
We thought it would be the easiest one.
Well, so, I read through it, I'm like, I don't think that that's the way that happens any longer.
Well, can I ask, do you, do we track substitutes who work more than 50 days? Do we know that even?
I mean, we could get a report from TOC, but, I mean, we don't, we don't track that for purposes of, of wage payment like we had in the past.
Okay, so there's a possible, a couple possibilities. Send it back to Committee, or if, if there's just a matter of striking something here, we could do an amendment and then read it again as a first reading. Is there a suggestion for an amendment to this? Commissioner Johnson.
I move to amend paragraph three by placing a period after long-term substitutes and striking everything, and regular substitutes, to the end of that sentence. But of course, we would have to insert an "and" before long-term substitutes.
So, just to summarize what Commissioner Johnson said, assigned 100% to the Eau Claire Schools and long-term substitutes, period, and the rest struck from that paragraph?
But we wouldn't include regular substitutes, then?
That was my amendment, based on, we don't have that data handy, so, you know, it would just create, I mean...
Yeah, I know what you're saying, but...
And if they've, and if the regular substitutes feel left out, and there is an easy way to track it, maybe we could add it back in, but at this point, I mean, we don't know if they're working how many days.
Is that what you want? Chris?
Technically, they're not our employees.
Yeah.
Correct.
I got you. We probably need to work on it some more.
So, I'll send it back, because, because I could see you saying maybe you would want to include this benefit for some TOC employees, is that...
Who do the employees purchase their activity passes from? Does anybody know?
The finance people in the buildings, so like at Memorial, it'd be Val Wood, and at North, it would be Mary McCabe.
So, if they're a long-term sub in any of the schools, they would have to go to North Memorial to do that?
No, probably, well, if it's an elementary... No, probably, well, if it's an elementary school, I would say, yeah, they'd have to go to a different, either a high school or here, because we don't have the activity passes out at the middle school, I don't think, do we?
I think that they gave them out to each school, you could get them from each school, and then they'd come from here. After a certain date, they can come here and get it from the old Mary McCabe position, but...
So maybe we, since we just read it, and if the amendment's acceptable, we can put it on as an individually-considered resolution, and if you can just give us a written report saying, "Long-term subs actually are buying activity passes, we need you to, you know, or not."
Well, unless, unless that, unless they want to change, I mean, I assume what you're thinking is that you might want to change it to include TOC employees or something? Is that, is that what you're thinking? Yeah, go ahead. The superintendent's gonna come.
I think the question here is, do you want to provide some type of incentive or reward for subbing in the Eau Claire School District, and that might come in the form of an activity pass, you know, that's easily tracked by TOC and, you know, managed in the, we get a list, you know, of people who in the previous year substituted 50 days or something like that. But I think it's a question of either you want to offer that as an incentive, or you want to strike it because we no longer manage those employees.
So we, so we could still, logistically, we still could offer it to them, even though they're still TOC employees?
Absolutely, because they're working in the school district.
Okay, I was under the impression that maybe we could do that, okay. I see.
I see no reason you couldn't do it. I mean, it's, it's, it would be, it might be an added incentive for somebody to say, "I'll sub in Eau Claire rather than in Chippewa, because I have kids who go to school and I'm gonna get this free pass," you know? I, I think it's a philosophical thing at this point, you know? What's your, what's your purpose in this?
So my, I don't know, I'll just speak up. My, my feeling is, let's just leave it as is, and it doesn't say they, they have to be our employees, they can be TOC employees, so if we can work it out to give it to them, then let's give it to them, like we always have.
Well, then, can I amend my amendment to say, "Long-term substitutes and regular substitutes working more than 50 days during the year prior." Present years.
So striking the who received the higher rate of pay?
Correct. Strike who received the higher rate of pay.
I think that's reasonable. Did that, was that clear? Should I repeat it?
I think I have it. You just are going to say, "And regular substitutes working more than 50 days during the prior year," and then get rid of the rest of it.
During the present year or...
Present year or prior year.
During the present or prior year.
Yeah.
Okay.
How's the board with that?
If everybody else is good, I'm good.
Do we, do we have a second for that? We don't, well, I mean, we're in committee, so we usually don't, but if, if we're okay with that, then I, we probably should do a reading again of it, unfortunately, because it's a new, it's actually a new policy now, it's changed. So I don't know if, Commissioner Luganville, you're willing to do that again?
So I'm just putting, we're working more than 50 days either during the present year or the year prior.
Correct.
Okay. I'm gonna read this really fast. "Activity passes allow the holder entrance to all district-sponsored, regular-season athletic contests and fine and performing arts activities. Family activity passes are available for purchase. This pass allows admittance for family members and guardians who live within the household of ECASD students. Employees eligible to purchase activity passes include regular employees, interns, people with emergency contracts, noon hour supervisors, CISA employees assigned 100% to the Eau Claire Schools, long-term substitutes, and regular substitutes working more than 50 days either during the present year or the year prior. Passes issued will be Eau Claire Area School District passes and honored by North and Memorial High Schools. Residents of the ECASD who are 62 or older and adults with disabilities will be admitted free to school events by presenting their Platinum Activity Pass. This lifetime pass may be obtained at the Superintendent's Office or at Memorial and North High Schools. In addition, all ECASD high school students will receive free admission to events with their current student ID."
Okay, no one speak up? All right, no, just kidding. Is that good with everybody? Are we ready to take this to, as read, to next meeting? Okay, okay, good, thank you, thank you. Public comment on activity passes, on the new one? No? Okay, all right. All right, so requests for future agenda items, do we have anything for that? Okay, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a second, we have a second for Commissioner Vu. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Nice discussion tonight.
This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.cbcTV.org.